Good evening. Welcome to the 10th meeting of the fiscal year for the Milton Planning Board. Today is December 15, 2011, and I am to remind you that we are both being recorded and broadcast. I'm Emily Ennis, Chairman, and I'll ask the other members to introduce themselves.
Alex Whiteside.
William Clark, Planning Director.
Bernie Lynch, Member.
Peter Jackson.
Ed Duffy, Member.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda is the approval of the past minutes, which are the minutes for December 1st. You should have received them in your pocket.
Spare and crisp.
Spare and crisp, that's good.
I believe that they be approved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any comments, discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Next scheduled Planning Board meeting is currently January 12 and 26, both at 6:30 PM and both here in the John Cronin Conference Room. Depending on how things go tonight, we may consider another meeting or we may not. Do we have any citizens who wish to speak? I should let you know that we have a public hearing on our agenda at 6:40 PM for 131 Elliot Street, so if, unless you need to leave right away, if you'd like to hold your comments for that, that'd be helpful. If you wish to speak on any other item, please come forward now. Anyone? All right, we have five minutes until 6:40. We could take the Town Planner's Report now, Bill, if you're ready.
No. Until five minutes.
We can probably find something else once you're done.
Yeah, we can ask questions.
Yeah.
I have something we need.
I have tons of paperwork for the Planning Board. I've got applications for the, dealing with the selectmen, I've been dealing with the appeal issues for the wind turbine, and then researching each, a bunch of the stuff that you have for zoning articles. And that's it.
Do you have some of that zoning stuff to give to us tonight? They weren't in our packets.
No, let me go back over one other thing on the Secretary for the Board, the Administrative Assistant for the Board.
Yes.
It is publicized in the newspaper. Don't ask me what paper. That's not what I do. I know that it did go to outside. They did not get any within the town hall applicants for this position. So it is outside, it is public. Anybody knows somebody that wants to work, one with me and two with this board?
I'm sure there are thousands of people who want to work with the Board.
Can I be the Secretary and still serve on the Board?
No.
You can't?
No, you can't.
Why?
You are the Secretary.
Well, I'd be the Administrative Assistant.
Secretary and Administrative Assistant?
Yeah.
Is that double dipping?
I think so.
Well, you don't get paid for one, to be fair.
Which one?
Well, we had other people in the town work for the town and serve on those boards.
On the same board that they worked for?
Oh, yes, we have, but we won't talk about that.
Interesting. Well, if you think you can work with us, I mean...
Well, that's the problem.
Ooh, ooh, knife in the back. Anything else, Bill? You have three minutes.
No.
What's the status of the turbine appeal? I mean, has there been anything in court yet? Are we just getting documents together?
Right now, we are waiting for a date for arbitration, and that comes from Superior Court. And the Superior Court judge will be going with that arbitration, or to that arbitration. Quarry Hills appealed the Conservation Commission's Order of Conditions, so that the first appeal goes to DEP. They also appealed the local bylaw, which goes to Superior Court. There's two for Superior Court. They, when they appealed to DEP, DEP came back, oh, they asked for two things. One, to vacate the Milton Order of Conditions and to not, to issue a superseding order of conditions denying the project. They came back and said no to both. And they issued an superseding order of conditions. So now we're going to an adjudicated hearing. The adjudicated hearing requires a pre-hearing, which we've already done. It has briefs that have to be filed, which Quarry Hills file, filing should be next week. Ours comes the beginning of January. The hearing is February 16th. We should hear about that one beginning of March. Whatever time it takes for all of that, it's going to take us a year lead time to order the turbine. Our turbine will look very much like the one that just went up in Boston on the other side of the Zacon Bridge. Looks like it goes with the plant in Everett. It actually is on the Boston side. It belongs to MWRA. It will be the exact same technology and it will look just like that one.
Same height?
I don't know what that height is.
It's a big one. Look at it.
We're only, it's big, but we're only at 409 feet, 415 if they have to move the foundation up a few feet. So we're within reason of, we were, our zoning says 480. Our original zoning, our original design was 470. We're down to 409.
Anything else? If not, we're at 6:40.
Good.
Nice timing. All right. We are going to be opening the public hearing on 131 Elliot Street, and I see we've already been joined at the table, so introduce yourselves. What we'll do for the members who are in the audiences, we'll have the presentation of the new material first, and then we'll call for public comment.
Okay. Warren Daniel.
Bill Fleming. William Fleming Associates Landscape Architects, Stoneham, Massachusetts.
Welcome.
Thank you. And Bill's going to start for us.
Well, I think we would look at the site plan and landscape plan and show the changes that have been incorporated based on some of the discussions and direction from the Board. And one of the first things I want to do is the landscape design is based into like three parts, sort of a naturalistic buffer, our park-like space in more formal treatment of the streetscape with softscape materials. There was a direction for a signature tree, and we've looked at several. We liked the sugar maple, the yellowwood tree, and we finally settled on a sweetgum. Sweetgum has a nice star-shaped leaf, a beautiful arrangement of fall colors. We have these pictures of plant materials just to remind the Board what the plants actually do look like, and so they're available.
They look like, right?
For everybody to look at. We have researched about our black oak, Quercus velutena, and we buy a lot of big plant materials from a company called Select Horticulture in Lancaster. They have huge trees. And unfortunately for the black oak, it's got kind of a weak root system. It's a very naturalistic woodland tree, and it drops quite a bit of material. I asked them what's the best size, or biggest size we could really get and have it be a viable tree, and it's about four, four and a half inches. So that plant actually, because the standards for street trees are two and a half to three now, they used to be three, three and a half, but due to availability and also the science about growing trees, they grow a little bit better when they start off and acclimate themselves to a certain area. To walk you through the plant materials, we have a mixture of evergreen trees, spruce fir here with honey locust as a naturalistic buffer, along our six-foot-high privacy fence. We have incorporated the granite and steel fencing for the edge of the street, all the way down and around the corner. We've combined sort of a nodal space here with a bench to provide a clear sort of gathering space to go into the retail on the upper floor and down to the lower retail, as well as a nice entrance to the residential part of the building. And we provided sort of a loop circulation to give a park-like sort of English Romantic place to walk. And again, we've placed benches in various locations. We have river birch, betula nigra, which is a really nice, out of all the birch trees we can grow nowadays, we're using quite a few of those because they're very hardy and have a beautiful exfoliating bark. And we do have a spruce here for, a blue spruce for the evergreen winter interest. We have foundation plantings along the inside part of our park courtyard. And pretty much the existing trees here are two Bradford pears and two honey locusts. We're reinforcing that at the entrance in our planted areas with a shad and rhododendrons.
One question?
Of course.
Bill, what are you going to put here along the track?
Well, right now, we're proposing pachysander. We wanted something that's green and evergreen and easy to care for. And I believe we originally had a gravel surface here, but obviously, green is better than gravel and access to the space for various maintenance-related issues with gates.
Where are the boxwoods going to be? My favorite bush.
Well, the Newport blue boxwood has a bluish color to it, and there's a large variety of color of green and density, but this will shear well, make a nice low hedge. And that's, that's behind our granite post and steel fence. We have a pergola here in the entrance area as well, again, to make a space for our people to gather.
Can you show us again where the fence is? It's a little hard to see from back here.
Well, actually, they, like the rendering shows, it will run all the way down to the entrance to the parking area, all the way down here, stop, start again and come down here and curve in where there still is a little bit of a change of grade. Then there's no fencing in here. We do have a raised curb here to keep the planting out of the salted area.
And along the park-like area, what are you going to do to indicate that that is a public space rather than a private one?
Well, obviously, it's, we have it open. We reversed basically the location of where the bigger tree, bigger canopy trees are, and they're more in wood, smaller canopy trees are more outboard. I think that you will be invited into this space. It will feel like you can and should go there. There'd be, you know, signs for, you know, coffee or some kind of retail thing where you'd want to go. This is the commercial area for parking, and so we're leading you in to this space as was suggested, which does make an awful lot of sense, that people that can park in here, gather and meander down to the retail areas where they're destined to go. So this just gives more of a feeling of a park-like space. And of course, you're not looking at it from above, you're looking at it, looking into the space, so we feel...
The stair direction changed too.
Excuse me?
The stair direction moved 90 degrees. It was going towards the building.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, this is much more open and inviting.
This is open hip, Bill, isn't it?
Yeah, this is a haved area. This is like a little gathering area, you know? It just invites pedestrians off the street into the space, like it would here for these retail spaces.
Any other questions from Board members? Yes, Alex.
On the street trees, I have a particular concern that street trees don't do well with salt, and these are really right on top of the, on top of the curb, aren't they?
These guys are in wood about four or five feet from the sidewalk, and actually...
Four or five, from the sidewalk?
Yeah, in wood.
Okay.
So the plant is starting out four or five feet from the edge of pavement, and another five or six feet to the edge of the street. Being one of the founding members of the Massachusetts Community Forestry Council, 501 3C, nonprofit group, I'm a tree hugger. And actually, we have had great success actually planting trees in the sidewalk. They just don't grow in four-by-four tree pits. We have trees, the average life of a street tree is eight years. My little skyline honey locusts in Stonem Square are 15 years old in four-by-nine tree pits. I could have made them bigger, I would have, but there were a lot of issues. But the success of really getting good soil and in construction administration, observation is really critical because as you try to get conduit up for like holiday lighting and stuff like that, up through the root ball, I mean, you just have to show up there and make sure that everybody's doing it kind of the right way and that you can see that the excavation is the way it should be. The loam that gets in there has to be the appropriate loam for drainage. And occasionally, a little bit of halts, which is a crabgrass, a preventer, and a little light fertilizer, actually for your lawn, on the tree pit, hand-broadcasted, really is very, very helpful. Like I said, we've almost doubled, and we will continue to double their lifetime. But you do have to, I work a lot with the town of Stonem in the DPW, trying to tell them, don't paint the copper light fixtures. You know, little kind of things like that are really kind of important. If you're there and you can kind of micromanage it, I handed out leaflets for everybody to water their trees, and you can actually tell the merchants who did that, because, you know, the guy who didn't do it, his tree is substantially smaller than the other trees, and it's just for lack of interest. So maintaining a quality landscape here is, I think it's fairly achievable. I mean, it's just, it's not, we haven't put anything in there that's too delicate, we don't think. But we're here to listen to the Board and see what improvements we might be able to make.
Have you...
But like I said, one of the things we weren't going to do was to plant the black oak on this property. I've talked to the client, and they're willing to pay for the tree and plant it in a place where the town thinks it would do well, like a wooded area that is being reclaimed as woodland. You know, the common oaks are red oak, scarlet oak, we don't plant very many white oaks, pin oaks. And those plants have better and more aggressive root systems. But we understand what the interest is in the black oak and feel that that's an appropriate thing to do, is to commit to planting it in the place where the town would like to maintain it. But I'm sure we can get a good one for you, because getting good trees is what we do.
Have you ever used the modular systems that encourage root, that stack together and encourage root growth of trees away from obstacles such as ledge? It also allows conduit to be fed through the modular systems? And it keeps the soil from being compacted?
I haven't used that. It's different than structural soil, right?
Yes, yeah, these are actually, they're recycled rubber systems with spaces in them. And what it does is it encourages, rather than the roots spreading out and perhaps going under the street and starting to push the street up, it encourages the roots to grow down. And you can actually place them in such a way that the conduit is, goes through, so they're not interfering with the roots. And a site like, and they can be built in such a way that the, they can encourage the roots to move away from ledge, which has been a concern of the Boards in this area.
Well, one of the...
I can get you brand names.
One of the systems that we're proposing, actually, and I'm not even too sure exactly where this is, but it's probably in Sudbury or someplace like that, Southborough. In the subdivision rules and regulations, they have the gas line sitting right under the curb, and we have grass strips and stuff like that. In order to control the roots from growing around the actual gas line pipe, we're using this thing that's called the bio-barrier. The gas line is down 36 inches from grade, and a good 80 to 90 percent of the root system in all trees are in the top two feet. They extend much beyond the canopy of the tree. And actually, there's all sorts of innovations going on in landscaping about transplanting and how to get the roots to grow and how to move bigger trees. And we haven't used the air spade yet, but a number of companies that we deal with have, you know, promoted that. And it's just an amazing thing to see a tree with all its roots exposed. I mean, they, you know, they kind of dwarf the canopy itself, so I think the trees that we've suggested are fairly normal, and they should be able to survive with a little bit of effort on the client's part, and that's in everybody's best interest, so I think we're in pretty good shape. And I think that the suggestion has improved the site plan and landscape plan.
Bill, can I ask you one thing?
Sure.
Just going back to the salt issue on the street, street trees, is that a concern that you would have?
Well, you know...
I mean, the trees are not in the sidewalk.
Right now, the Bradford pears that we have and the plantings here, they'll be subject to some salt that will be off of sidewalk, from the sidewalk plow and sanding operations. We've had very good success with these plants in parking fields, which are inundated, unfortunately, as much as we try to leave people away from that. And actually, the salt is a big problem where that when it heats up, if you take salt water and put it with dirt and then heat it up, it just compacts. Basically, what they do is it suffocates the plant. So you need good draining soil, and you've got to try as hard as you can to keep the salt out of there. But the Bradford pears have been tremendous plants, and I'm not really too sure how long these guys have been down here. The pears are doing a tiny bit better right now than the two honey locusts, but I'm not too sure if it's a species thing or something else is going on. It could have been, you know, just Mother Nature.
Maybe the planting pits aren't big enough.
Well, I would just went, I had an opportunity to go by, and I kind of thought the planting pits were the same size.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it just, it could be anything. You know, a lot of times, plants aren't planted at the right height. Or people put eight inches of mulch on top of them and think that's going to be a way to grow a tree. And we do what's called postmortems. We go by all our jobs all the time, because we've had a number of them, so that if you're out on one assignment, you'll go by another one that you've done a few years back. And you have to be really interested in knowing how you did so that you can provide the right level of service to your clients in the future. And I've been interested in that for a whole long time.
Any other questions on the landscape plan?
I'd like to. You say that you need four-by-nine tree pits, sort of minimal. What sort of tree pits do you have there?
Well, these are called tree pits because they're engaged with the actual, there's subgrade and loam all around them. A tree pit, and you used to have to give a buck every time you use the word "tree pit" at these tree conference things. The things are that under concrete is, you know, gravel, and underneath that is subgrade, which is glacial till, which really doesn't have very much valuable, value for the tree. So when you do the four-by-nine tree pits retrofitted, what you have to do is be very careful about how you excavate, because you can't undermine the curb or the other sidewalk components. So it's kind of, you know, the contractor wants to do as little as possible. You want to be able to say, well, a little bit more wouldn't be bad. And once they do that, like I said, you'll be surprised. You've got, you know, you've got to be kind of a pain in the neck and talk to the town manager and call up DPW and do a few things like that. It's not much, and then they know that you're looking after the trees, and then the situation's a little bit better. But we don't have any, any, in real tree pits right now. This would be the closest right there.
And if there's ledge, it'll be blasted out so that it...
It will go, and actually, what you've got to do is overblast, because you've got to crack it. We've done so much work in New England where we're told to plant trees on rocks, so in order to get the trees to plant on the rocks, you've got to make sure it drains too. So you've got to overblast them, and that allows for the drainage. And more of a naturalized situation, we all see pines or oaks struggling out of a granite outcropping, and the reason is, it's found its little niche in there and has, you know, established itself, usually a more dwarf situation, like trees on roof decks or whatever. Will always be small because there's only a certain amount of soil that it can actually grow to sustain, you know, its size, so it will stay small.
But the mid-tree, the signature tree, which is that...
These three signature trees have plenty of loam around them.
Okay, but if they are on ledge?
Oh, and here, isn't this part of the footprint of the building?
Oh, that's where the current building is?
The existing building?
Yeah, I think the existing building's all the way up here.
Okay. So it will be, because we want the signature tree to be, or the signature trees to be big trees.
Well, they, well, scale-wise, these are the biggest plants that are going to grow there. I mean, out of, you know, our pears will be smaller, river birch, it's a fairly fast-growing tree, but the signature tree will be the sweetgum.
What's its height, mature height?
Mature height, 70.
About a tulip tree?
Tulip tree is a beautiful tree. This tree, though, it has that fall foliage that's a little bit sexier. I mean, it's got some real color and some vigor. The tulip tree, which I love, and Frederick Law Homestead, and they're all over the, I mean, the Arnold Dinerium has several. It's a great tree, and it's good for the Biltmore Estate driveway as a giant LA, but I think here, I really like our sweetgum. And the tulip tree, because we've used them before, is so subtle. It's beautiful little tulip cup with little orange, greenish-orange. It's a beautiful tree. You've got to just get the flower down so you can actually see it, which is too bad. But that's why we have so many different varieties to choose from, for flowers and fall foliage and fruit. So we think that the changes requested by the Board certainly complements what's going on, and we are confident that it will look nice over the life of the project beyond our days walking around, I hope.
What do you have along the property line there?
Well, we have a privacy fence in here, and then we've got our honey locust and our white firs, and it gives sort of a woodland effect for our neighbor. There is a big, I think it's a sugar maple. And I think there's a hemlock right on our property line. And so, and we've got some ground cover as well.
And the QT, the, was it?
No, GT.
GT.
Those are the honey locusts. Skyline honey locusts, which we like a lot because it doesn't have the bean pod. A variety called Shade Master does have the bean pods, and they're not all that attractive because they just turn into brown, almost like boomerangs. So people don't like those all that much.
Bill, a question. Would, this is kind of a stock-looking view. Can you plant any trees on this side?
I'm not really too sure if that's, I think what we have is you have balconies and stuff for the units.
Well, they don't have to be, well, there's a garage here.
Yeah.
You see the bays.
We do have bays projecting into that, though, four feet. So it's, effectively, you have about six feet of space between the bay front and the property line.
Are you concerned about the view in?
Yeah.
Because I think you have a rendering of that, and it looks reasonable to me. Again, where we do have some more space, perhaps some shad, which is a mid-story flowering tree, might be...
Not too big, because there's a river here in the upper floors.
Oh, yeah, they want to see that, yeah.
But people coming into Milton, this is, at least from this area, this is the first thing they're going to see.
Well, you know, one of the things that I think, and I don't have that... Well, you know, one of the things that I think, and I don't have that rendering, do you have the small rendering line?
Yeah, I do have that.
Because I think that really kind of tells the story. From what I can see, there's a fence, you know, one of those monumental steel fences that go down that side. In here. And see, it looks like they're treating it as masonry openings.
Yeah.
And so it will have a certain color richness there and also some transparency for, you know, safety issues. It's a north facade, so it's going to be shade all the time. And even Harvard now isn't growing a lot of ivy on buildings because of the Holfast get into the mortar joints and have a tendency to work on it over time.
Just a thought.
Well, no, and that's why I thought it was, I thought it was a good observation and I knew that I had seen earlier a rendering of that and.
I think I've got to agree with Bernie, maybe not so much in this. One of the reasons for that space is for maintenance, so you can't fill it up with plants because you've got to get in there to wash windows and maintain the siding and things like that. But it doesn't show on this rendering, but for a lot of that length, there's two stories of blank parking garage wall. It's not all balconies and windows. It's, you know, it's, and so I think looking for an opportunity to put something that can either be trained up the wall or, you know, grow on, on a lattice system, you know, a steel lattice system off the wall there. Just something to get a little bit of softening at that edge because with the new bike path that's going to go right along there, this side of the building is going to be very visible. And the first two stories are blank parking lot walls. So I think something to break that up a little bit is a good idea.
Is it actually two stories?
Two stories.
Well.
Not in front there.
Yeah.
Starting right about where Bernie's window is. It's not, not visible there.
Well, my response is I'd like to plant it, but I'm not sure that that will be the long-term answer.
Looking at possibilities.
Well, no, I mean, certainly, I mean, I think all these possibilities. But what I think they're trying to do is make a patent on that wall so that the patent itself looks more, gives more scale to the building, like it's an opening. Wouldn't it be an opening for ventilation or something like that?
Correct.
And again, we can look at it and perhaps maybe a shrub or two.
Right, not densely planted at all.
In the, in corners where it's not in conflict with views or something else, that's.
Here's the, here's the proposed bike paths right here. It's on the side of the tracks right here.
Well, there's a number of deciduous plants that are shade tolerant, native plants as well, that do have flowers and berries. So we could, we could consider those.
Any other questions on landscape? Pete, did you have some?
I've got a few.
Maybe if you could take the renderings down so we could see the landscape plan again, thank you.
You talk about planting a black oak. This is the first I've heard of that idea.
Okay, because of the historic oak. And, and to benefit the town, someplace within town parkland, on the edge of, an area where you wanted to do some improvements. We, we decided we would try and get a black oak and have it be a viable plant. So that was my research with Select. What can we get? Can you get it? The answer is yes, I can get it. Size wise, four inches is about all he would suggest.
And the purpose of that planting is?
Well, the purpose of the planting really is to, in the, in the process of developing the plan, there was an old large size black oak on site that had some, that was really pretty old. And it had to come down for disease and other kind of reasons, or safety reasons. And just as part of the commitment of the client to say, okay, you know, would replace the black oak, not exactly in kind because it's hard to get one that size. But the idea was to offer that as part of being a good neighbor. And to really kind of have the town decide where it wants to go. Because like I said, it's kind of a woodsy, I mean, if you go over the Arnold Dinerium, there's a lot of black oak, which I love over there. So, but there, I'm sure there's places in town where one might be appropriate.
I think a few things that I want to query about, and I know there might not be answers for all of them, but just some suggestions. I think the sidewalk on Elliot Street needs to be a minimum of six feet wide. And I don't know that that's what shows there, but that's going to be a major thing.
We have it at five.
So I think a minimum of six feet makes some sense. I think the side, the break between the sidewalk and the landscape there. Earlier I had suggested that, no, between the sidewalk, at the edge of the sidewalk, just at the edge of the sidewalk where the, your fence is.
Yeah.
The fence, the fence. We'd been talking about that in an earlier meeting and I had suggested I liked the fence better than the idea of putting a hedge or something. But I really think a better treatment, again, the notion of this is public space, not a private space. And I think that kind of a steel fence kind of says this is private space for the development. So I think a simple, a nice granite curb on the inside edge of the sidewalk. And then let it be open rather than a fence, I think would be a better signal to the public that this is a public space and not a private space. Now, the fence maybe could occur up by the parking lot.
Like, like has been shown in the rendering and stopping here?
No, not going that far.
Not going that far.
Keep that, that edge open where you've got grass there, have that just a curb so that it appears to be more of a public space.
Now, so the fencing would run from here to there?
If at all, it would go from there, possibly to there.
And then just a curb?
Right.
And a curb, I need fencing in here as there's a change in grade.
And that's what my next question. How much of a, I know the sidewalk rises there. How much of a change of grade and therefore the slope of that planting bed? When you get up near the steps, that gets pretty steep.
This is going to be high on the inside here. And this one, this cheap wall will go down with the stair and railing. But the railing tends, it has to turn into a fence here.
That's right.
And there.
But what about going down toward the corner there where you've got, where you're planting your boxwood?
We were actually going to use that granite post and steel fencing there as well. Kind of as an edge, a barrier, almost to put your hand on as you walk down there. We're thinking that it would just a way to have some uniform treatment of those areas, just as an edge. And with, you know, we would stop with a nice granite post on either end designated, this is where all the pedestrians should come in.
Okay. The, the.
I, I just, I want to understand that concept. I mean, I can, I can see that a granite and steel fence could be really quite attractive. We want to see what it looked like, obviously.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I don't think that's an odd request.
I think it can look attractive, but I, I think that it does say private space. Where we're trying to emphasize the public, but again, we can.
But I think if we modulated the end granite piece so that it was somewhat larger. Usually, you've got so much historic landscape here in town, that that is commonly a way to indicate entry. So you go, you know, from a big post, which is entry, to little tiny posts and then a big one, and then you know you can go back in again. So, I mean, it's a language of perhaps dimension. I mean, I, I don't mind the idea of, of the curb in lieu of the fence. But the fence is such a nice little sort of residential treatment. If it's, you know, three feet high, I mean, where we have to have it meet the code is up here. But having a fence at a nice height that is almost like a picket fence. I was once asked how high should the picket fence would be? And the height of the picket fence is so that you can run your hand along the top. I don't know, as a kid, didn't you do that? Everybody did.
Hang on, Ed, guys, Ed's been waiting for.
I just want to agree with the speaker and I have to disagree with my friend here and learned landscape architect. I go along with the steel fence for one reason. I live in front of a park. For one reason, you want to protect the park because the idlers would want to walk in and do something. And also from the animals going in there. Help to keep the park a lot cleaner, a lot more respectful. So I'll disagree with Peter on that one.
Well, like I said, there's that flexibility. I think from what the renderings show, yeah, I don't know, I kind of like. So I'm pretty happy with the, the mental idea, the concoction of what this would look like here. I think it would be pretty attractive.
Moving on, I think the, the buffer between the parking lot and Elliot Street to the left of the driveway.
Parking lot and Elliot Street, okay.
That way, that, just to the left of the driveway. I think that's got to be a deeper screen there to screen the parking lot from the.
It's not a complete screen the way it's currently laid out.
I think a more generous screen as kind of exists there today, you know, probably is better in that location to kind of screen that. Because a big parking lot like that is, you know, not the most attractive thing in a residential neighborhood.
Well, we have a, we have a U hedge, but it's not 100% solid. And the reason is we're going to give the trees a couple of spaces where the hedge goes to grow too. Over time, that, the size of the U's can be manipulated a bit to allow to grow, you know, towards the tree as the tree.
I think also for the root system of those trees, having more, you know, ground surface there makes sense. And I, and the pear trees on the other side of the driveway there, the same thing. I think four feet from the edge of the, of the sidewalk is too close for salt reasons and everything else. You know, in my practice, I always try to put things back six feet minimum or maybe even eight feet. And I'm not a big fan of the pear tree there either, but we'll get to all those. We don't have time to go through everything tonight. I think there's two things that I would like to comment on. The design of the major green space there. I think part of the notion of that space and the design of that space is to earn a, an FAR ratio as a replacement for the damage to the historic tree. I think the design as shown is a good landscape design for that site in the absence of trying to replace somehow the value of the tree that was lost and taken down. I think that that has to be a significantly more public friendly, a real gathering space for people. And I would, what I envisioned seeing there is a landscaped terrace or plaza with benches and tables and stone walls and gardens. You know, a real centerpiece that people want to come and visit. And I think it takes a design of that magnitude to really make up for the damage that was done to the town in removing that tree. Again, I don't expect a response tonight and I'll, you know, other members can walk in. But I would, I expected a lot more in terms of the design of that space. The one last comment I'll have, again, since we don't have all night, is the two planting beds that you have up on Central Avenue near the entrance to the parking garage. According to our zoning, those areas need to be commercial spaces. So those planting beds would have to disappear in exchange to be entry spaces to commercial uses behind them. And that's an issue that we haven't addressed at all yet on the board, but it is part of the zoning. So that is going to have to be addressed and it's going to have to, and then just the one more thing I just remembered. Your sidewalk that comes and turns that corner, I like the idea of your having the sidewalk design. And of course, the design has got to replicate what was put there in our, our commercial area revitalization thing. So it's a combination of brick and concrete. But then, other than the sidewalk, the rest of the area should be that, the decorative pavement. So some of these areas.
So.
So that area, that, that area, that should be part of that. So other than the sidewalk itself, I think the rest of it should be that decorative pavement.
So this decorative pavement goes out in here?
And, and maybe the other way too, you know, and that you'd have to study in design. But that side, there'd be a sidewalk, that's one design, and then the rest of it is the pavement related to the building. I wouldn't put it up by the tracks there. I think where you've got the concrete up by there, that's fine. That's my own thought, anyway.
No, that seems reasonable.
Anything else from the members of the board? Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this? We still have a few more things to go through on it, but is anybody here to speak on 131 Elliott? I should let you know, for those of you who are waiting for the discussion on Milton Hill, we're going to move it ahead on our agenda and take it directly after this one and move our other items to be later than that, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be looking at it further. We do have a few other things that we need to go to. First of all, I have been asked to read.
Well, we do look forward to a productive association with you.
Yes, absolutely. I have, in the absence of other public comments, I have been asked to read two very short emails, which I'm going to do right now, from people who could not be here. And then I want to talk about the other items that are on our agenda for tonight. So the first one is from JP Plunkett the fourth. And it says, "I cannot make tomorrow night's meeting, but wanted to reiterate my deep desire for Mr. Connolly's project to be given quick approval. The more units, the better, and I very much want some of them to be commercial. The site is currently an embarrassment to the community, no fault of Steve's, and can slash should be a gateway of pride to our fine town. Please be sure that my voice is heard and pass my email around in printed form to all in attendance, or at the very least, please read it out loud. I really want this deal to happen and I have zero traffic worries whatsoever. I live and have lived less than a minute from the site for over six years and feel very qualified to have such a strong opinion. Best wishes and Merry Christmas." The second is from Ellen DeNurier, and it's to the Milton Planning Board, William Clark Planning Director, and it's CC to the Town of Milton Fire Department, the Police Department, Inspectional Services, and Selectmen. Says, "I regret that I am unable to attend the planning board meeting on 12/15/11, but I am sending this email to reiterate my concerns about the appalling condition of the existing building and site. It is deplorable that the developer has owned this property for over 10 years and has allowed it to deteriorate into a public safety hazard as well as an eyesore. The lack of maintenance on the building and the site is a serious safety concern which should be addressed prior to consideration or approval of any proposed development. The building is a fire hazard, contains hazardous materials such as asbestos, and is unsafe to enter either to inspect or to fight a fire should one occur. It is unacceptable to allow this condition to continue. I believe the town should step in and require that the building be demolished as a prerequisite to any further consideration of the developer's proposal for the site. This is a very prominent building in a prime location which is a gateway to our town. It is an embarrassment to the town and should be an embarrassment to the developer. I do not believe that someone who has shown such a blatant disregard for the neighborhood and the town should be rewarded by receiving approval for his proposed project, which I believe to be substandard. I am enclosing recent photos of the existing conditions at 131 Elliott Street. Thank you for your consideration of these concerns." So those are the two letters. I have actually had another request that the building site be cleaned up, that the weeds be down and the building site in general be cleaned up. So I passed that on as well.
And we obviously would like to see it cleaned up. We've, on numerous occasions, suggested that the developer should tear down that building and proceed a pace from there. The problem is that the law does not give the planning board the jurisdiction to require the developer to tear down the building as a condition of consideration of the developer's application. And I think that we have to work within our jurisdiction.
We do, but I have read the letters as requested, so.
I just.
It is good to clarify, I also believe.
Just to say we don't ignore it.
Right, and to, to further clarify, as I understand it, the building. And to further clarify, as I understand it, the building is partly on town-owned property, and that is one of the reasons that it cannot, in fact, be torn down, because the developer does not have control over all of the building. So, however, the site could be cleaned up. Mr. Connolly, welcome.
Good evening.
So, you have sent us by email a few documents. We're not getting printed copies, is that correct?
Of these? No, I have a few of the narrative.
In future, since not all of us have email and not all of us can access it, it would be helpful to have seven copies of everything, or prior to the meeting.
Yeah, I've been bringing them, but it seemed as if everybody was bringing their own.
Yeah, the town has been occasionally able to print out some of the black and white ones, but I don't believe we have copies of any of the color renderings.
Okay.
So, that would be nice to have that caught up. Excellent.
I just have this one.
I think some of us have printed them out on our own, but not all of them. So, tell us what you have for us.
I think this was in the packet.
That was in the packet, because the town printed them out. But that should really be your responsibility.
All right.
Yeah. What this colored plan, two plans, is doing, showing the business spaces in this kind of orangey color, and then the common space in the green. And we've, as you can see, enlarged on this floor, the first floor, space, make it all three of these. Before, it was only these two, and this was still going to be residential. And then the common space down here and in here, which is the hallway. We've quantified this and done it more in a table form on the first sheet of what we also sent you, which I hope is more clear. You don't have to kind of dig through the narrative. Do you want to go through these?
Before you do that, I have a question on that plan. I don't know if anybody else does as well. On the second, your top plan, that's the second floor, correct?
Yeah.
You've got the garage lobby as part of the business, is that correct? Is that a proportion of the green area?
Yeah, we're showing all of this, and with the reason being that it could be used to, the stair could be used to go between the two levels, commercial levels here and here.
And are you counting the green? Two questions on that. You're counting the green part as part of the business requirement?
We are, although I think we qualify without this piece too, because we're substantially over the requirement.
All right, and then that's my next question. That part for the garage lobby, does anybody parking for commercial have access to the garage? Or is that simply?
No.
I think you're, okay, so the garage lobby really isn't commercial common space then? I mean, that green part there, if they don't have access to the garage, then that should not be counted as a commercial space.
Right, and I, yes.
All right, so you'll take that off your calculations?
Yeah.
Great.
How do you feel about this, I mean, this piece here with the elevator and the stair? Versus this, say, roughly half of this? I think, again, I think we don't need any of this to have the square footage.
Well, if you don't need any of it to have the square footage, then you can take that whole portion out.
We'll just take it off.
Great, okay.
And that's.
And then you'll update the tables.
I've shown this number six item, business use area, at 50% minimum. The zoning limit minimum is 8,386, 8,0386, and we're showing 8,0784.
Okay. So, you will then adjust that to remove that upper portion?
We can do that, yeah.
And give us the new number?
I have an observation about this, is that notion that I brought up when we were reviewing the landscape plan and the zoning requirement, that the space adjacent to the sidewalk needs to be commercial, so it really can't be parking lot.
Well, as we talked about before, we have this in commercial, and there couldn't be, as you say, an entrance here which negates this landscaping treatment, but this is parking over here.
Well, in your plan it is, but I'm saying that the zoning doesn't allow that.
Yeah, and in fact, I still have an issue with that there, myself. I really, really, really do believe that that should have an active use, so that there are eyes in that corner and on that track, and, you know, it's attracting people from the bike path into the business district. I still do not like that as parking.
Well, and as Pete points out, the zoning says that that area has to be business to a depth of 50 feet. And so.
But adding those two spaces then would probably fill out your business, you know, use requirement.
Yeah, and, you know, it creates some parking issues, but they're not insuperable, the parking issues, because the board does have the ability to determine the amount of business parking you need, so long as you specify the uses.
Right, we have some flexibility there. So, given Pete's point on the zoning, given the idea of attracting people to the district, I think you should seriously consider looking at that corner for commercial use. We've asked that before.
Okay, and this still would be a drive-in.
A driveway.
So, this would be an isolated space?
Well, it could be whatever you, as the architect, designed.
That's right.
In other words, we're not telling you how to design it, we're simply saying that have some commercial space along that particular piece of sidewalk.
Yeah, it'll be a small space.
You could make a nice, small sandwich shop.
Yeah, a bodega.
Or a bicycle shop.
Or a bicycle shop. I actually work above a restaurant that has a small sandwich shop around the corner. If your use was a restaurant, or if there was another restaurant in the area, they might be willing to have that as smaller space, as a little sandwich shop to sell to people on the bike path, or going into work, picking up their morning coffee and the paper. That would actually be an ideal use for it.
Well, certainly, 50 by 20, that's 1,000 square feet. That's not a tiny little commercial space.
Yeah. So, what else do we have?
Well, it looks like you can get your business use. Obviously, where you colored this, you colored right on top of the parking spaces, and you will be redesigning that so that you don't show parking spaces or apartments in the business area.
Right, right, yeah.
And I assume you've already taken those parking spaces out of your calculation?
Right, yes. Yeah, we have 34 parking here now on this level, and 28 on the first floor.
Now, if you look at your site plan, you do have room, if you need to, to expand towards Elliot Street, the Elliot Street side. You know, if you have to reconfigure your building shape slightly, you do have room to shift towards the residential a little bit, given what you may have to do on the corner. So, just keep that in mind, too. One thing that would be helpful in looking at the plans is a site section, so we can see how the building is sitting on the site and how the parking garages are arranged over each other with respect to the residential and the commercial spaces. That would be very useful.
Okay, a building section, really?
A building section, but showing the site as well. So, I would do, I'd like to see what's going on underneath the visible part of the building.
Okay.
It would give us an idea of the depth of room for the trees to grow as well.
Well, exactly. And tell the landscape architect to get cracking on getting a.
He's listening.
There he is.
I'm all ears.
You are all ears.
A proper sort of landscape outside so that it can be used for business and yet be an enticing entry point.
It could be a trash barrel.
Might be helpful.
Probably, yes.
What else in the review? So, I think you've not necessarily completely convinced us that you're entitled to the FAR bonus yet.
I'm sorry, to the what?
The FAR bonus.
Okay.
Not completely convinced on that, is what I'm hearing from at least some of the members, yep.
Okay.
Yep. We still haven't seen a massing study yet. We've seen those beautiful watercolor renderings, but we have not yet received a massing study. I assume you know what we're asking for with the massing study, all right? Sketch up off of a Google Earth would be just fine, but we do need to see that. Anything else that we're missing?
I'd like to see the size of the park, the proposed park, dimensions, please. I don't have it.
The park?
Yeah, the dimensions.
That area there.
Yeah.
Sorry, 70 by 100, you said?
70 by 100, I think, something like that. I mean, it's a little deeper in the back where it's a notch and a knuckle.
And did they send out the traffic study? Because, as I say, I don't.
No, that was, I believe, Steve, the last email I saw from you, you thought it'd be either tonight or tomorrow that we got it? Okay. Holding off?
Especially.
Okay. So, do you think our next regular meeting is January 12? Do you think you would have all of this by January 12?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay.
Four weeks, yeah.
Yeah. It would be nice, if at all possible, to have a complete package so that we can review them before the meeting. Seven copies, as I've said, so, one for each of us, one for Bill, and one for the file. And PDFs are good, too. Bill, you remember when we had the discussion on the temple? We have a separate part of our website set up for documents. I think it's time that we do that for this, so, because people have been asking to see what we're talking about.
Put our administrative staff to work.
We'll put our administrative staff to work. Sorry, Bill. It can be, when we get our.
No, no, no.
Oh, no, that's right, Pete, you're going to be our clerk and secretary. If you could set us up a website.
I haven't been hired yet.
We'll have an interview for you.
And I'll get on it when it.
Okay, fair enough.
Appointed.
Any questions for us on what you need to provide, where we are? Are you looking for some information from us that you need?
I don't think so. I think we've got.
Okay. Okay, great. We're trying to get to the point where we have the complete package, and I know you've been working with us on the conceptual ideas so that we can get there. I think now, if there's any other members of the board that have questions that they want to see, now is a good time to mention some of those, but obviously, this is still a work in progress.
Well, I think.
Let me just ask one simple question. In advance of the meeting, we'll send you, do you want packages, print packages, or?
Printed packages would be helpful. I don't think most of us.
PDFs.
PDFs are great for reference, but for those of us who like to scribble all over them with ideas.
Right, okay, so you.
We don't have 11 by 17 printers, so, printed packages.
So, we'll send them.
Yeah, send them to Bill, and he'll distribute them.
Bill, he'll distribute them, okay.
I need those PDFs, one for the file and two for the website.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yes.
I guess I've got two things. I'm still working off the original binder that was submitted, but it's hard to know what's what, because a lot of things have kind of gotten outdated, and then there's so much new stuff that's been put in.
Right.
It's kind of hard, and it might make sense to kind of, I don't know if you collect these old binders from us or somehow, but kind of give us what the status is of the current thing.
Yeah, we realized, we've talked about that. It's essentially, the plans are pretty close to what they were. The elevations are very different, as you know, from what they were. So, there's a mixture, and the commercial spaces are different, so there's, you're right, you do need a redo of that. We can do that.
And then the second piece is, earlier, several meetings earlier, we talked about doing drawings that show context, and what we had in mind was like elevations along the street. So, you saw, you know, the residential buildings, and then this site development with an elevation, and then going across so we see the stuff on the, you know, so that we can put this building into context with both the residential areas and the other commercial structures around there. And I think it's elevational drawings that show all those buildings, so we can see scale.
Yeah, of course, we're trying to accomplish that with these renderings.
Well, but those are renderings, they're not elevation, so they really, I mean, they're beautiful, but they really don't represent.
They are gorgeous, but Pete's right, you're not seeing everything all at once the way you would do. And also, massing studies, again, that we've been asking for, for a while.
Alternative ways to.
Elevations in the massing studies are key to get a sense of how it's going to feel. You know, the renderings are perspective from a particular point. They're not, and they're gorgeous. You've done a, you know, your watercolor artist on that did a stunning job, but they're not the information that we need to see to see the whole street facade at scale. So, and that's key.
Okay.
From all the different points. And, you know, the other thing, too, is the renderings aren't showing the entire building. So, for example, the part along the tracks where it goes up to two stories, we haven't seen that yet, and we need to see that as well.
That's really elevation.
Absolutely. And don't be afraid, you know, as you're looking at the commercial space, I know you, we've been working with this sort of L shape, concept shape, this whole time, but don't be afraid to, you know, take out a corner here and put on a little bit, that, you know, we're fine with you being creative on the shape, especially to make sure that we meet the zoning. Because that's the key at this point, is as much as we all want to do something with this site, if it does not meet the zoning, we cannot approve it. And this is the point at which you need to be showing that.
So, I would guess that that means that this, the latest letter you sent addressing the zoning piece by piece, we really have to do, you know, we've started going through and address a piece here and a piece here, but I think getting through your response, you know, and get through everything, so we can kind of come to a common ground on where we are relative to the zoning would be a big help.
Yeah, I think the next meeting we have at the moment, one, the January 12, we have an introductory meeting before you, and then I'll try and keep the agenda as clear as possible, so we can go through all of this zoning there. It'll help having the traffic study there.
Yeah, we'll have the traffic.
And having the remaining drawing, yeah, exactly. So, unless you guys have anything else for us, or the board has anything else, I think we can let you go until the 12.
Okay.
7 o'clock, Bill, on the 12, January 12?
At 6:40, we have Pulte.
We have Pulte at 6:40, so that gives us 20 minutes of Pulte. That should be fine, it's just an introductory.
7 o'clock.
So, 7 o'clock on the 12? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you do get a chance to do something about the weeds, I know a couple of people who'd be very happy.
Getting close to.
All right. Next item on our agenda is the Milton Hill House, right there here. Come on up. I think Bill's just setting up the computer for you, but. Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
I would love to.
Your team?
Good evening all, my name is Ned Corcoran. I am an attorney, practice in Quincy, and I live in Milton. Can you please grab it one and pass it down, please? And I am here with Jim Sullivan and his sister Nancy Pharoah, who are the next generation of the Sullivans who own the property known as the Milton Hill House. I'm with Donnie Garrity, who is one of the project architects, and Blair Hines, who is the landscape architect who's just come on board and is now starting to work on refining issues around the landscape. Just a sort of a general introduction and a background, we've, this team has been through about a year and a half of planning, meetings, discussions with neighbors, revitalization committee, Milton Hill Neighborhood Association, to refine the scope, the location, the size of a proposed development. And we've arrived at a development of about 27 apartment units located on, right on Elliot Street, below the existing Milton Hill House, and in a location that replaces, obviously with a larger footprint, two old, two-family houses that have. committee, Milton Hill Neighborhood Association, to refine the scope, the location, the size of a proposed development. And we've arrived at a development of about, of twenty-seven apartment units located on, right on Elliott Street, below the existing Milton Hill House. And in a location that replaces, obviously with a larger footprint, two old, two-family houses that have, that need to be removed. But restore and preserve the Henry House itself, which is a historic building. And so, I know that, and I, for the record, am an a butter to the property. I was retained by the Sullivans and have been pleased to work with them through a number of the development issues as we've refined it with the neighborhood. And I'm, I think, happy to say that there is substantial satisfaction within the neighborhood, not speaking for the neighbors, but within the neighborhood for what we've arrived at. Still some work to do to refine plantings and other issues along the edges, particularly as, with, it deals with direct connection with the butter properties. And we are pleased now to be working with Blair Hines to, to work in that direction. So, what we have is a PowerPoint overview that starts with a quick distillation of sort of five concepts that we worked through in conjunction with the revitalization committee. John Zickowitz and his committee was very helpful in sort of having us look at locate, different locations on the lot and whatnot. And we've arrived at a final one. And then we'll show you sort of a fly-around, the premises, what we're, you know, what we're looking like, what the site plan is currently looking like, so that as we begin to apply more formally, we'll, we'll have given you an opportunity to see it, comment on it. We do need variance. We need to go before the Board of Appeals for variance from a range of, of things and come back to you for formal site plan approval, all of which, sure.
Can I just ask for a little clarification for the audience and everybody? The current development was approved through the ZBA, right? The, the current Hill House, that was the zoning Board of Appeals? And the intent of this is not to change zoning, but it's to get it approved through a variance of the ZBA, correct? And then what would bring you to other town boards, like is our role in, in site plan review?
Site plan approval.
Site plan approval, no, no special permit, but just a site plan approval based on variances, a number of variances or however that the ZBA awards.
Right. We, we need variance from density, the land is, the property is currently zoned, residency. There are, the property that was acquired has three, two-family residences on it. The, the two families that would be torn down is the Henry House, which is itself a two-family. We preserved the Henry House as a two-family. We would tear down the other two, two families that are down on Elliott Street and replace that with a twenty-seven unit apartment complex. We need a variance for that. We need variance for height setback, both front yard, side yard, we need rear yard setback, relief for parking. Interestingly, because the, and the, the Hill House itself, which was, which was built as a result of a variance granted by the Board of Appeals in the early nineteen-sixties, it was originally a restaurant in that property. The property today is substantially overparked because of the need for parking for the restaurant. And so, adding twenty-seven units, we only need to add fifteen parking spaces to the lot to provide one and a half parking spaces per unit. There are thirty-six units in the current Hill House and there are thirty-six cars owned by the owner, by the occupants of the Hill House, so there's substantial room. But why don't we, I start with there with the, so the background, walk through the, with Donnie, the, the history of the site plan development to date and then open it up to questions.
Sounds reasonable.
So, as Ned mentioned, we've been meeting with John C.'s revitalization committee for over a year now. We've presented them several, several site plans that we've come up with. We work with them and the neighborhood to develop those. And with each one of these ones I'm about to show here, there's been variance off of those. But for, to get the gist of, of where our discussion has led us, these following images are kind of where we had taken the discussion. So, when we started here, we have, we had the building located in this location. It's actually where we're proposing to put the current location, but as our initial stop here, the building was much larger, it was four, over forty units, five stories total. This next one here, we tried to respond to concerns about pulling the mass of the building away from the neighborhood. Here, we, we would have proposed a new driveway to come back here to a courtyard that would service the new building. Again, this massing was five stories from Elliott Street. We heard concerns about wanting the development to be upon itself, so in this massing study, we flipped the orientation to have the buildings, the two Hill properties speak to each other. We looked at an option that was in addition to the Hill House. We all then took another approach and looked at the opposite side of the property, closer to the lower mill section of, of town. And that brings us here to an aerial, current existing conditions of the site right now. So, to familiarize everybody with the site here, this is the existing Hill House right here. Where we're proposing to put the building is here, where these current two, two-family homes are. The topography of the site is drastic change from around sixty feet to the crown of the road, approximately here, to a steep incline of about, I think it's about thirty feet to the Hill House. We've gone, here's a diagrammatic site plan of what we have proposed. We are reusing the existing driveway of the Hill House and we would come off with a continuation of the front portion of their parking for our new parking along the rear of our building. We'd have our main entrance and ground floor at this rear part of the building. Since there's such a great, grade change, there's actually a full floor height difference from the street to the rear of the property. So, whereas in the back of the property, you would have two stories plus a false occupied attic. On Elliott Street, you would have three stories plus that false occupied attic. Also, to note here is the existing Henry House that we are trying to remain. There is actually a piece here, you can see in the aerial, there's a piece here that we are proposing to remove to, to let the, the new building have some space around it. Also, here is a tertiary building, a small garage building that we've developed as an idea with the neighborhood as an architectural way to buffer the new building from the residential Here is an insert of the aerial with our new site plan. And now to take you through a few aerial views of the, of the site, this is, this is one view, this is that Henry House, this is Morton Terrace right here. Circling around, looking back. As you can see, three levels plus the false occupied attic. One more, looking over the existing Hill House. Now we're at two stories with the, with the third in the attic. Here's that small garage building and the existing Henry House. The language of the building that we're, we're using is a shingle-style architecture, which was familiar with the neighborhood, and we wanted to keep that language of, of this neighborhood within the new site. The garage, slightly different vernacular as we're showing, but the ensemble of the three buildings together create a nice, nice little, nice little sighting, I guess you could say. Here's a view looking down, just a diagrammatic perspective, looking down at the new site. As you can see, we tried to, as close as we could, match the new ridge height of the new building with the existing Henry House. Here is that garage building we were trying to use as an architectural buffer, trying to set up a, more of a singular family, family residential component before the new building present itself to the neighborhood.
And that, that view, just to jump in, is from Morton Terrace?
We, we've put some, diagrammatically shown some landscaping to try to show how we've envisioned a, a buffer to be set up. This is just a little further down here. We, we've, I'll let Blair explain this a little bit as well, but what we have, what we have tried to, to do is with the neighborhood, is extend Morton Terrace per their request to alleviate some of their parking problems that they have for their residences there and also help with snow plowing and...
Well, we, we met with the fire chief. One of the concerns of the folks on Morton Terrace is that we would cut off all access from the end of Morton Terrace into the property. Currently, the Henry House, you actually can access the parking area for the Henry House by coming through the end of Morton Terrace. We met with Chief Grant, Chief Grant agreed that it was, was appropriate to, to completely close off the access at the end of Morton Terrace. What we have done, and, and you can see in the site plan, is sort of create a little, cul-de-sac's the right word, but an ex, paved extension beyond the end of Morton Terrace to serve both for the purpose of having a place to push the snow when they, when they plow Morton Terrace and also sort of an area to back in and, and turn around for folks who live at the end of Morton Terrace. The concern of the fire chief was that we, if there were a need to bring a, some apparatus in to get at the Henry House itself, that you could bring a ladder truck into the end of Morton Terrace and run a ladder over a level of plantings or a fence. And as long as that, he had that access and you could pull a fire hose sort of through, then he was fine with that. So, I know that the neighbors were, were pleased that we were able to resolve that issue in particular.
This is again, that view just now with the landscaping showing off to show how we're trying to set up this, the perspective from that neighborhood. Here's a view looking, looking down from the east. The way the road curves on the site, the, the view of the, as you approach the building from this side would be obscured as the curve comes around like this, approaches low mills. Here's a view looking back. A view from the rear of the site, which is heavily wooded. Which brings us to our landscape plans.
My name is Blair Hines, landscape architect from Blair Hines Design Associates. And we have just started to work with the architectural team and the owners in starting to develop a landscape concept for the development. As Donnie mentioned earlier, there, let me see if I can find that, right up here. Okay, there's a large patch of woods that's currently behind the three existing houses, which we were glad to see that the development wasn't taking out. We think that it offers a lot in the way of reducing the scale of this building because many of the trees are forty, fifty feet high. And that although they're deciduous trees, so in the winter, there isn't as much screening, they nonetheless really create, you know, I think, a, a pretty significant barrier in the landscape. And one can, if one erases them and just imagines that being a big patch of grass, you would think of this building, the new proposed building, as being a lot more kind of present to the nearby residential neighborhood. So, what we tried to build on were a couple of the concepts that Donnie brought up. And one was to try at the end of Morton Terrace here, to develop some landscaping that was compatible with the fire department's request to be able to, to be able to fire, to be able to fight any fire here at this Victorian house that's being preserved. And then again, to kind of build, again, some evergreen screening just to help to minimize the presence of the new building, as was also shown on some of, of the architect's team's diagrammatic studies. In looking at this new proposed building, we're really seeing it in many ways as having like two fronts. It has a front that's along Elliott Street. And in this situation, we were wanting to get some flowering trees and some shrubberies and plant, and plant out pretty much everything between the existing wall along the sidewalk and the building facade. And then on the front, which would be the front door, to create some type of a nice residential setting. And if you look at the individual drawings, we were, we were showing some kind of special pavement area that was opposite the handicap parking. So, this whole area in the front of the building would be flat. Since it's south-facing, this is going to be a fairly warm pocket and we wanted to create just a place for, the client mentions that a number of their renters tend to be elderly people, so we were trying to create something that made a nice place for them to sit and enjoy living there. And that included, you know, both flowering trees along the front, which are in the, kind of the pinkish color, as well as shrubbery along the front. And then also some deciduous shade trees on either side to, again, to create some both shade, but also some scaling factors so that the building doesn't loom very large. And I think that with Donnie's, if I, if I understand correctly, this building is really like two stories facing to the south with the roof that has some windows. So, it's not, you know, in terms of its height, hugely different in, in, in its height than the other buildings in the neighborhood. Obviously, it's a much larger mass. And, and the more massive aspect of the building, of course, would be along Elliott Street.
Whether you can see, on the Elliott Street side, there's a, there's a walkout there that is for trash removal. The idea would, the idea is to have apartments on the lower level facing out to Elliott Street, possibly with walkout, possibly not, still to be determined. But trash chute down and then trash removal would come out down below and be picked up a couple of times a week down below, so there would be no need for dumpster to service this building. There's an existing dumpster that services the Milton Hill House and that's, that is removed a couple of times a week. But the notion was here was to, was to get it down and out. So, the mechanical rooms would all be built into the rear of the first floor elevation, placed into the hill. And then the main entrance is, is on the, is on the uphill side, the parking lot side, and then all of the elevator services from there. So, with that, we'll throw it open for questions.
Please.
It looks like you're preserving the stone wall along Elliott Street there? And so, these plantings are up above that wall?
Right, so, yes.
That's where you take up this, the height difference?
Right. And the idea, there's a number of driveway cuts, there need to be some filling in of the existing, it looks like a Quincy block wall.
Now, access to the Henry House is from Blue Hill Terrace, right? On Blue, Morton Terrace?
There's two access, actually. There's a driveway that goes up to the left side of the Henry House, fairly steep grade and comes up to a parking area.
Oh, it does.
But it's also open to Morton Terrace.
To Morton Terrace.
And it's easier to come in from Morton Terrace than it is to come up from Elliott. The, the future build would be that all access would come up the site driveway and then work your way along to, to some parking spaces that would be proximate to the Henry House without any access coming from Morton Terrace.
And I'm surprised at that. I would almost think that, that it would make more sense to have access to the Henry House continue off of Morton Terrace. So, it, being a, you know, Victorian residential structure, appeared to be the end of Morton Terrace and it could still serve that visual blocking function and have the break occur there. And that would probably require moving the newly constructed garage closer to Morton Terrace so you can put the two parking spaces in there. The other notion that, as I look at this... The other notion that, as I look at this and looked at some of the views you had, that garage, if it was a bit taller, you know, again, would have more of a screening capability, and that yellow Henry House structure could be kind of a strong terminus to Morton Terrace, where this seems to open it up a little more, but this is...
I guess two thoughts on that. One is, there's a very, very strong desire among the neighbors on Morton Terrace to close access to Morton Terrace, and we're listening very closely to that.
Couldn't that occur on the other side of the Henry House?
I suppose it could. I think it, that it creates, well, it creates other issues we can certainly look at, but I think, not speaking for those neighbors, I heard very clearly from them that they liked what we've gotten to here. Separately, I have heard from some that, you know, at one point, in a recent iteration, the garage was potentially a set of townhouses with two stories, and that idea came from the notion of, at a working session with the neighborhood a couple of months ago, about the, instead of just tearing off the little wing of the Henry House, turning that wing 90 degrees and that that would serve as a physical buffer. And so, we looked at some different ideas on that. I think the notion of a taller garage structure, even going back to the townhouse, is something that's still open and play from the developer's perspective. They want to do what's most right by the neighbors in terms of that look. I agree. When you look at the, with the garage as it's currently situated, it's low and it really, it doesn't do much more than sort of quickly draw you right, it doesn't really serve as that physical barrier, the buffer.
You mentioned you still have a couple of steps. Do you have a timeline yet associated with those steps? When would you be back, when would you be with the ZBA, and when would you be back for us for the actual hearing on the site plan?
We've got some work to do in the next 30 to 60 days, 30 to 45 days with Blair and the neighbors in terms of specifically working on the treatments that move along the boundary line, what type of plantings beyond what you see there are appropriate. And our, we will be back before the revitalization committee on the evening of the 12th of January. I'm beginning to prepare the application for the variances before the Board of Appeals. I'm expecting that we would be before the board in February and that we would be back before you, March, April timeframe. And we can schedule, we can file for site plan approval. We certainly can't begin to meet with you formally on site plan approval until we have a decision of the Board of Appeals. So, running that schedule out, realistically, February, Board of Appeals, March, April, Planning Board.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. Any other questions from members of the board? Anything you have to ask of us?
Appreciate, we just wanted to...
Well, I was just going to say that this isn't a public hearing, so normally we don't have public comment, but I see an awful lot of people in the audience. I don't know if you all were here just to listen, or if anybody has any particular comments that they wanted to make. So, yes, one in the back. Please stand up so we can see.
My concern, I, Ellen Solon, I live at 22 North Road. Ned's correct, maybe been working at the neighborhood and it's going to take, but my biggest concern, and that's why I came early to sit for the Henry's thing, is the traffic, and a traffic study, just for the whole area, I think is key, just considering that number of residential units that are going to come online, and then the restaurant going in. I really think that needs to be done before all of this stuff is approved.
Thank you. Yes, sir, and name and address, please.
My name's Tom Volks, 50 West Side Road, and I'm a butter of this particular project, but my comment's really geared toward, I guess, how the planning process dovetails with multiple projects. So, we heard the request for a traffic study from the folks at the Henry's building. That's great. They're going to come back and they're going to say, "No problem, we're only adding 30 cars." Then we're going to hear a traffic study from this, and it's going to come back and it's going to say, "No problem, we're only adding 30 cars." Then we're going to hear from the restaurant, they're going to say, "No problem, it's only 150 seats." How many cars could that bring into the neighborhood? And then we're going to be back here again for the proposed development in front of the storage facility, and we're going to hear again. In total, individually, no big deal. You'd find us probably a pretty amenable group to a certain level of development. Collectively, you know, we're feeling a little bit like the frog in the pot of water. And none of us signed up for that, and that is our prime concern. So, we're not, we're not here to argue about individual develops, we'd like to understand how this is collective eyes and why our particular neighborhood of Milton seems to be bearing the brunt of a great deal of development. And you don't have to answer that question.
It's a reasonable question, right, no, that's...
And again, we're not, Ned's been great working with us. We look forward to working forward with the whole group, with the Solovens, and finding something that's amenable, but we're thinking more macro. And we want to make sure that the town is thinking macro and not just stuffing something into our corner, because, you know, the argument that, oh, taking, there's a trolley there that's wonderful, a T's there. If any guy, who rides a T here in this room? Is it fun?
Yes.
It's a nightmare. Coming home on that thing in a, on a afternoon and throwing a whole bunch more people in Milton is not going to improve that unless the MBTA plans to revise that line, and I don't care any, no blame about that. We're looking at overloading a combination of traffic and more urban transit unless we all decide to work off hours.
We will, we will take your comments under advisement on the traffic study. Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else have anything in particular? So, Ned, it might be worth calling the people that are currently doing a traffic study and maybe having a chat with them. I don't know that they know that this is coming online. The restaurant, from our perspective, has already been permitted, as has 36 Central Avenue, and as has Two Adams Street. So, it might be worth a call over to Mr. Connolly and just making sure he's aware of your plans as well before he finishes his traffic study, or see if you can use any of that information from him in your own work. Other than that, we will see you when you next come and bother.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for attending, we appreciate it. And look, Pete, massing studies.
They do help.
All right, next item on our agenda are the articles for the annual town meeting. Actually, the first article up is 597 Randolph Avenue, so we'll give people a little bit of time to clear.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
597 not coming in?
You'd look great like this.
He wishes.
Maybe a lonely son.
He's growing it to donate to friends who need it.
Oh, that's a nice one.
They do have such a, such a thing, you know, for cancer patients, yeah.
All right, so the first item on our annual town meeting list is the historic preservation PUD for 597 Randolph Avenue.
It's changed.
First on the list, right under Old Business. Starts it off. See, then you've got additional potential zoning underneath, it's very cleverly worded to catch the unwary. So, Bill, as I recall, Alex had given us a draft of the historic preservation PUD at our last meeting, and you were going to share it with the proponents from 597 Randolph Avenue?
I sent it to him, I have not read that from him.
So, he's not with us tonight to give us his view.
Correct.
Well, that actually presents us with an interesting conundrum, because this zoning was being developed specifically...
He doesn't have a date in front of our files to be able to push this project out yet either.
Which brings us to another question is, and I think the answer will depend partly on how much we get through at the moment, but the articles are due at the Board of Selectmen on January 6. And we haven't heard from 597 as to whether or not they're interested in pursuing this. We've got a bunch of other articles on our plate, so I think we may, at the back of our minds, want to consider the possibility that we are going to have to meet before January 6, depending on what we think about the various other articles in front of us. So, Alex, you drafted the historic preservation PUD. What do you want to do with it?
I discussed it last time at some length, and I don't think I'm going to reiterate what I said. I'm happy to do whatever the board feels is best.
Have there been any edits or anything since last time, or does it still?
Still as it was.
I think it's a terrific solution to the issue we've got there. It appears that there's no proponent for it.
Well, that brings us to an interesting question is, do we feel it's, first of all, do we feel it's in a substantial enough form that if we gave it to the selectmen and held public hearings on it, we could make any modifications that came out of the public hearings to it and still have good zoning? Are we happy with the form that it's in? Does it give us the flexibility we would need to make modifications? Can we, does it give us sufficient scope to answer the questions that might come up?
But if there's no proponent to asking to rezone that land at this point...
Well, that's, that's question number two.
This is not spot zoning. This applies to any lot that meets the, meets the...
Criteria.
Criteria.
Yes.
So, it isn't, this is just zoning.
That's question number two.
They would, obviously, they would have an interest since their land does fit the criteria.
This started as a citizen's petition that somebody wanted this land rezoned, but now when we're trying to rezone it, nobody's here.
Can we withdraw these things?
Well, hang on, hang on, hang on. First of all, can we just answer question one? Are we satisfied that this zoning is in a form that would allow us to take it through the public hearing process? Yes?
I thought, I said last time, I don't see how, any guarantee of the, I don't see the guarantee of the public buffer all the way along the edge.
Okay. But that, could that be addressed in the public hearing and added? Do we have sufficient scope in there to add that?
I think it's there. It requires significant green space and...
So, we can modify the language?
I don't think it needs to be modified. I think that if we don't have significant green space on the roadways, then, you know, it's a no-go.
All right. So, we're satisfied, we can give it to the selectmen and take it to a public hearing. Next question is, do we want to do that in the absence of the proponent? And that's an interesting question, is should we, is this something that is so valuable to the town to have that we would want to go ahead and put it on the books anyway? Or are we really just reacting to the citizen's petition and now they are, although we had been trying to work with them, they are no longer in the process, and therefore, we want to wait until they're back in the process before we go forward?
Yeah, I think let them back in.
Well, I'd be happy for them to come back in. The question is, are they going to make it before we have to give this to the selectmen? We'd have to have another meeting. Yes, and Ed too.
My view is this, I mean, this has to do with the particular developer. We really want the historic building preserved, and this developer wants to put up additional units. I've always felt that there's no reason that they can't work within the existing zoning to come up with five or six lots, which they could have common driveways and would be okay. And another developer might well say, "I don't need, I don't need this zoning relief to preserve the building." And obviously, we're really dealing with this particular developer saying, "Please preserve the building. If you preserve it, we'll give you additional houses." Another developer might say, "This is a signature building, which will really add to the value of the hole, and I wouldn't think of tearing it down." And of course, that would be ideal because there'd be fewer houses and it would be probably a nicer development.
Ed, you had a question, comment?
I'd rather wait until the annual town meeting.
Well, this is for the annual town meeting. We are at the point where we have to decide what's good. This is what's going on to the annual town meeting, so Bernie, well...
I thought this all started so that the church could sell that property and take care of some of that bill.
To this particular developer.
Yes, I don't want to go into the church's finances because I don't know the answer to that, but they wanted to sell the property to this developer for more units that they can do than they could do under residency zoning. So, the developer had proposed from 10 to 12, 12 was the most recent. We were working with him because the citizen, the zoning that they had proposed for the citizens, as a citizen's article for the special, was nowhere close to what we could do. Alex came up with the zoning, just to recap for anybody listening, Alex came up with the possible zoning, and we have not heard back from them on how they feel about the zoning. The trouble is, unless we had a special meeting of our board, this is the last time we can make a decision as to whether or not we go forward with this, and we are in the absence of the people who originally wanted it done. Yes, then...
I think, I think it probably makes sense to go forward with this, because even if this developer doesn't go forward, and maybe it's two years down the road, but at some point, there's going to be an effort to redevelop this property again, at least rather than pick it up again two years from now under time constraint, and, you know, this gives something that we feel would be an intelligent way to redesign that building that provides incentive to save the existing building, which is very important to us, and it provides incentive to save some of the open space on that corner. And if we put it in place, even if it's not used initially, you know, it could come down the road, and if we don't put it in place, then we're going to be scrambling again at a later date to try to redo this. So, I think it's, I think it's a terrific, I think it's fine. The only thing that I would edit, you know, might be to reduce the 30-foot setback from adjoining lots, but, and that could be worked out in the public hearing process and things like that.
Should we put 15?
That's what I would do, because that gives the designer more ability for where to put the garages and whether the garages are integral to the buildings or something like that. But other than that, I think it's brilliant.
Oh, there you go.
I, you know, I tend to agree that the, it makes sense to have this because even if this developer doesn't go through, another developer, I mean, there would be no reason to have to scurry to put it in place because...
We have it.
Yeah. I tend to agree. I think what it does is it says to any developer coming to this property that we value that house. I think without it, you could have a second developer come along and say, "I'm just doing a single family, just as I can by right, knocking down the house, nobody really cared about it, so it's fine." This actually puts a statement out there that says, "We are interested in preserving that historic property." It also puts into place a precedent for the idea that the planning board is interested in keeping historic properties as much as possible, and I think that's not a bad precedent to have. Doesn't mean that we would always keep a property, there may be properties too damaged to keep, or there may be a good reason for not doing that in some places, but I think it's not a bad thing to put forward. My guess is also if we don't put it on for the annual town meeting and suddenly people realize that the deadline has passed, it's going to be an awful lot of scurrying and gnashing of teeth, so we protect ourselves in some ways by putting it on. But I think it is good zoning. I think it reinforces the items that we thought were the most important, and I'd be happy to send it forward if we had a motion to send it forward to the selectmen.
I'll make a motion that we forward the historic preservation plan unit development zoning as drafted with one amendment to change the setback to adjoining lots to 15 feet rather than 30. All the details of this will certainly be discussed through our public hearing process, which we'll have to follow before this... which we'll have to follow before this actually goes to town meeting. But I think this is a good way to protect the town's interests in historic preservation and open space preservation on this parcel, given that it will be in play for redevelopment in the future. So, that's a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Do we have any further discussion? Aldous in favor?
Aye.
All right. That is one article to the, to the Board of Selectmen. Okay, the next article is the Home Occupation Bylaw. And I believe Mr. Corcoran, this one is yours.
It is indeed.
And you have given us an updated.
I did.
Version.
I haven't seen that.
Yes?
We have it.
It was in our packet. Should have been in our packet.
In the pack we just got tonight?
No.
Wasn't the one that was sent out?
When you got to your house.
Zed Milton Planning Board Expanded Home Occupations. I have an extra copy if anybody needs it.
Two pages?
Two pages.
Two pages. Okay.
So, following our discussion two weeks ago about the approach that I'd taken, it seemed to me that the Board was interested in seeing something that was more closely mirrored the existing home occupation bylaw, but that provided a special permit for any issues of expanding beyond that. And currently, a, someone with a home occupation simply comes into the town clerk with a plan of the 400, up to 400 square feet within his or her dwelling, and it can secure a permit, a license, a certificate, they call it, and you pay the fee and that's it. If you own, and if you have a dwelling with an attached garage, presumably you could get a permit within 400 feet, say above the garage, because it's part of your dwelling. But if you have a property with a detached garage and a garage that could be easily converted into 400 square feet, or as proposed here, something more than square, 400 square feet, or own some other building, or a building on a lot that was contiguous, you have no right. You have no ability to secure permission under the town's current bylaw. What this would do would simply end the, for 400 square feet within your dwelling. There is no public hearing process, there is no process by which you have to satisfy neighbors, that what you're doing is appropriate, you simply come to the town clerk. To go beyond is what, what I'm simply doing is mirroring the identical language that's within the home, the current home occupation, and allow essentially two exceptions by special permit. And that is that if you want to seek to conduct your home occupation within a separate building and/or if you wanted to exceed 400 square feet, if you had a health facility, Pilates studio, something that had equipment and needed more room, it wouldn't attract necessarily more people, but you could limit the numbers of people who would be allowed to come either on an hourly basis or whatnot. You would have a hearing process that would take into account those of butter and neighbor concerns before you could be granted a permit to do that. And I think the, the hearing process, the special permit, would protect a butters. It's, it is intentionally, and I think the home occupation bylaw itself is somewhat vague in terms of how you apply a standard, and so standards would be different, or impacts would certainly be different that you would be mitigating against based on location. You know, if you're in a neighborhood in East Milton where the residency and the houses are next to each other, you can certainly see there's one level of impact by, you know, a couple of vehicles coming during the day. If you're out in southwestern Canton Avenue with large lots and not much between you, there's a different type of impact. But as long as you were able to work with your, your neighbors and a butters and come in with a plan that was reasonable and acceptable to all, then the ability to secure a special permit, I think, would be appropriate. We're not otherwise changing zoning, we're not spot zoning properties, we're simply under terms and conditions and for durations that are reason, that are, is limited to four years, subject to renewal, you would be eligible for a special permit. Separate question, one question I had as I was sort of drafting this, and I think is certainly subject to discussion, a couple of things. One is how to go about renewing, because the current language doesn't provide for a reapplication for special permit that might be inappropriate means because it forces the process back into the public as opposed to simply the building commissioner reviewing and making sure that everything's going fine, and the town clerk then reissuing the certificate. And then separately, what is the appropriate body to, to hear and, and issue these types of special permits? Right now, if there's a need for an appeal because of a violation for the existing home occupation, the Board of Appeals is the, is the, is the body that hears that. They hear all variances, they issue special permits for general use issues related to property. They're not elected, however, so there's a, maybe a bit of tension in terms of how that, the, which entity is more appropriate could be resolved, and I'm somewhat ambivalent on that. So, I think finally, the notion of special permit, this is not a use variance, it's not changing by variance the use for an indefinite period, doesn't run with the land. And so, but you still have to establish that there would be no substantial impediment on the general public, and you have to establish that there's no substantial derogation of the intent of the bylaw. Certainly, the intent of the bylaw currently is to allow home occupations, they just limit it in space within a dwelling. It doesn't recognize that people take advantage and use outbuildings on their property. So, I think, given those, and I guess a third question would be whether, you know, 1,000 square feet is, is too many square, is too big, you know? So, that's a, that's a, I can see as a concern. But depending on the location, if you had 1,000 square feet and there wasn't much around you, and you was reasonably buffered by distance or otherwise, then on a case-by-case basis, I think you would establish that, that there was no substantial impairment to the public good. With that, I'll open it to your questions.
Fox, Pete, Ed, and then Alex.
Go ahead, Ed.
Thank you. Last time we discussed this, we tried to estimate the size of this room, and now I know because I measured it before the meeting. This room is 14 by 26, which equals 364 square feet. In other words, it's not even as large as the current, current bylaw allows. This new proposal would go up to 1,000 feet, which is 2.7 times the size of this room here, and I think that's extraordinary. And I think what this is doing, I think even the, the current bylaw might be doing is just loosening the fabric of, of the residential zoning as we, as we've customarily known it. I'm opposed to the 1,000 square feet. Also, we will be discussing a master plan for the town, and I think that's where this belongs and not before the town meeting, because it can wait, and, and just, just on size alone, having an area almost three times the size of this room to be, to be used for a business in a residential zone, to me is just against our traditional recreational zoning, so I'm opposed to it. And actually, if I had my brothers, I'd be opposed to 400 square feet out of it. Thank you.
Well, the comment on the 400-square-foot article, you know, it's been in place for six years, as one who operates a home business. You know, I, I think it creates an opportunity for people to be at home and do things, you know, out at the home and related to the family and stuff, and still conduct a business. And I don't, I, to my knowledge, haven't heard any complaints about the effects of the home occupation on the neighborhoods. I am concerned that this article as proposed, particularly going up to 1,000 square feet, is really opening up our residential districts to somewhat of an unfettered commercial development, although it's got to go through special permit and things like that. I think, I think it's too big, and it, you know, the intention is if somebody wants to have a home office, they can have an office up in the attic or whatever. To expand to this size, meaning, you know, the idea of like an exercise studio, well, if you've got a 1,000-foot exercise studio, that very well could be 20 people at an exercise class, which means 15 cars out on the street, which is really, I think, impacts a residential area. The other thing that I think about this is that at that size, it really provides an opportunity to create competition for the commercial spaces we're trying to fill in our new development. We're trying to attract businesses into spaces at 36 Central that are less than 1,000 square feet at that, instead of using a commercial district where we're getting a commercial tax thing that they could go and do in the home. At 131 Elliott, the Hendrys were going to have commercial space there that we're desperately trying to fill, 8,000 square feet of commercial space to fill. The new development at 2 Adams Street, I didn't look up the numbers, but there's a significant, the restaurant's the major commercial space, but there's commercial space in there to be filled, and, you know, to say nothing about keeping the existing spaces that both at Central Avenue and at East Milton full. And I think providing an opportunity for businesses to locate in town, not in our commercial districts, and they don't generate any commercial tax revenue for the town, I think is making, is running counter to our efforts for our redevelopment of our commercial districts. If indeed, looking at the existing home occupation bylaw or provisions, I think there are ways that we could consider some modifications to those without severely impacting these things that I talked about. I think we could ease up by letting that use occur in an accessory building. If you had a detached garage rather than an attached garage, you know, to allow it to occur there, you know, or another, different accessory structure that you have, I would have no issue with opening it up that way. One of the things that this said is only people who live in the dwelling can be engaged in the business. So, for example, I couldn't hire a secretary, or, you know, a bookkeeper couldn't have a receptionist or, or somebody, or an assistant or anything like that unless it was a family member. And I think it's not unreasonable and not unburdenousome to the neighborhood if a person comes in and works in the business along with the other person. I think that, you know, one employee from outside the dwelling isn't a significant thing. But I think allowing 1,000-square-foot businesses in the residential districts, I think, is overly burdensome on the, on those districts.
If I may, Madam Chair, I, 1,000 square feet seems to be an issue for, more important to the proposal that I have is the ability to use other structures. And so, 1,000 square feet, I think, you know, there's, there's some reasoning behind the 1,000 square feet, but the 1,000 square feet is, is an issue, is a major concern. It's capable of being scaled back, and so.
How many square feet does the particular dance studio that is generating this require?
Or whatever the use may be.
Well, I mean, it is a dance studio, isn't it?
No, it's not.
Well, it is a use, and you know what the use is.
It is a Pilates studio. It probably needs about 500 square feet.
But then we get into the issue of how many cars are coming, how many people there at what time, and where they're parking, which is, this was meant to not generate.
Nothing in this about parking.
Just that it needs to be reasonable.
Well, it says reasonable, it won't unreasonably burden.
Adequate parking.
But it doesn't mean you have to provide parking. There's nothing here that says you have to provide any parking.
Exactly.
It simply says, the Board has to somehow determine if the traffic going to this place is.
Is excessive.
Excessive, whatever excessive means.
I know during the discussion of the home occupation bylaw, you know, the fact that the people had to reside in there, the parking, that it would generate no additional parking.
Exactly, right.
So, that's, you know, even to allow one employee, you know, does generate one more vehicle during daytime hours or whatever, but the idea of having 30 people or 15 people come for an exercise event and have to park on the neighborhood streets, I think that's putting a burden on the neighborhood.
Yeah, I, you had your hand up first, Alex. I'll let you go first, and then I'll add my two bits.
And you'll wrap it up.
I'd like.
No, I'm going to let Bernie speak first, too.
Well, my view is that this is a major expansion of commercial uses in residential zones. There are no limits on what these things, no particular limits, I mean, they can't be noisy, but the, allowing people to come along in their cars, the only thing that you don't have are signs, but they would not be far behind, in my view. Opening up the residential zones to this sort of commercial activity, in my view, would go a long way to taking away the special feeling that Milton has. It, it, the Home Occupation Bylaw has, has done fine the way it is. I don't think that, providing that people can now attract others in cars and do whatever they want to, as long as it isn't really noxious, is what we want to do in our residential zones. And I agree with Pete, there's going to be plenty of business space available for people who want to conduct such a business, and they could put up a sign.
And they could pay some commercial taxes to, or the building owners can.
Bernie?
The present home occupation people, do they pay business taxes?
No, it's just the fee to, it's $200 every four years, so it's effectively $50 a year, but it's 200, you pay the 200 every four years, and that's it. That goes, that's the fee to the town clerk. They are not assessed for taxes, and actually, that was one of the big concerns of people who wanted to get the license, was that they would be assessed for commercial taxes. So, anything new going under the home occupation law as it currently stands would not generate commercial revenue to the town. Pete was absolutely correct in saying that.
Well, it is impacting a neighbor, the neighborhood, and why shouldn't they pay that, why shouldn't they pay a business tax?
All I'm, all I'm saying now is that it's not current, there's no taxation level set up currently to do that. So, if you are looking at something that, as you say, could significantly impact the neighborhood, there is no way currently for that revenue to be set up. The Board of Assessors would have to look at it and propose something to town meeting in order to do that, if that was something they wanted to do. On the other hand, by doing that, depending on how it was defined, you might prevent anybody from getting the home occupation license. The idea, as I recall initially when I went through, was that there were a lot of illegal home businesses going on, and this was a way of allowing people to have legal businesses to be able to get bank accounts in their, their name and comply, and many people have done that. But I think if you started setting it up so that people were getting taxed, suddenly a lot of those people would not necessarily be anymore, so.
Do we know how many, how many people in the town, how many permits are out there for, for the business use?
I don't know. It's a good question. Bill, did you ever get a chance to ask? I don't know. I know there's two sitting at the table, but other than that.
It looks, it looks like it's a potential tax situation, you know, we're laying our people and so forth, and.
I don't think you'd get enough from most of these people because quite, the, the taxes that you usually get is personal property taxes.
Well, it's at least triple.
Yeah, but it's not on very much equipment. You're talking about.
That's double.
You're talking about a desk and probably a couple of computers, as far as what you would tax. would tax.
Square footage, yeah, square footage, a small office.
Well, depends on how you do it. I mean, Boston does it on personal property tax, and that's the equipment of the business. It's not on the square footage. So, you depreciate your computer over three years, you depreciate your furniture over 10 years, maybe, maybe, probably more like five. It's not actually, it wouldn't bring in that much revenue to the town, so...
It would be an enforcement nightmare.
It would be an enforcement nightmare because people would just go underground. Now, if you're talking about a much larger business with a special permit, that would be a lot easier to track. So, the Board of Assessors, as opposed, could look at a way of, well, we'll only tax the businesses that got a special permit, but then that's still an enforcement issue for them. So, and I'm not sure the Board of Assessors necessarily wants to spend that amount of time on it. It's an interesting question. My, I've got, I've got a couple of issues with this zoning change. One is the, the fact that we have a lot of commercial space, actually, in Milton that's not being filled, and we're adding a lot more. I know there's empty space down in East Milton because I've been told that. It's a concern when we are trying, we've got three, four business districts, like Steady reminding us of the fourth that we never think about it, but three main business districts that people go to. We're trying to revitalize those. It's an issue when suddenly we allow people an option not to use that space. But my primary concern is, and Ned, I've mentioned it before, is the other, is the buildings on contiguous lots in the same ownership. I can understand wanting to use, if you have a detached garage, I can understand that. But the contiguous lots in the same ownership, I think, opens up a huge can of worms, that what you actually have is people living in House A and using House B, and then where do you stop it? I mean, because it says contiguous lots, so you've got, House A is a dwelling, House B is the business, but now they actually own House C as well. Is that a dwelling, or is that a business, or what's, where, you know, there's nothing in here that allows the planning board, as currently written, or the ZBA, if it was chosen the other way, to stop when those lots stop having businesses. And I'm not sure...
Then if they're big enough, we could make it a commercial district.
Well, you know, and that goes to the idea of commercial creeping into residential districts, and suddenly the residential districts are no longer residential districts. I certainly appreciate the argument that Milton needs more commercial and more amenities, and one way of doing that that we have looked strongly at is revitalizing current districts. One way that in the past has gotten a lot of flack and a lot of concern is expanding those districts into residential areas. But we're not talking about expanding a specific commercial district into a residential area now. We are talking about allowing any residential area to have multiple businesses, and as you know, I'm bringing up the bed and breakfast later on in the discussion, Alex had a point on the bed and breakfast, is, well, what happens if the whole street decides to go bed and breakfast? With the current four-foot-square proposal, that might not be as bad of a thing, but what happens if a whole residential street goes home occupation, where every other house is actually a business? How do you, how do you say to the first person on the block, "You can have the home occupation in the building next door, but you're the second person on the block, you can't do So, drawing the line, I think, becomes difficult.
Well, I think just to answer that question, whole neighborhoods today could become commercial if they simply put 400 square feet of home occupation in their dwelling. Every dwelling in a neighborhood could do that.
Didn't have any cars coming in?
Well, that's actually part of the issue, is they're not allowed to have large numbers of people show up. Yeah, every, every, I don't have any...
No, I'm not suggesting that large numbers of cars would ever be coming to any place.
All right, but let's go back to the...
Because that gets back into the whole notion of when you apply for a special permit...
Right.
What is the, what are the, what are the issues and impacts that specifically relate to the, to what would happen with respect to that property and with the, and with the abutters?
So, since, so since Alex mentioned a dance studio, let's just take the dance studio example, is there's nothing in here that says you can have a dance studio, but you can only have them meet once per week, or once per day? Because what you could be talking about for a standard dance studio, say, in the city of Boston, is five classes a day, some early in the morning, some in the evening, six days a week, 15 people at a class at every single one of those classes. There's not, now, it may be that what the person wants to do is two classes a week during the day when nobody else is home. That's fine, but there's nothing in here that allows us to limit the use by number of days, by number of people. And so, if you've got five houses on the street, and I'm not saying that because, you know, clearly the home occupation hasn't been every single house on the street, clearly B&Bs aren't going to be every single house on the street, and I doubt that every, this, every single person's going to want to be building a business next door, but there is no way to limit that. There's no way to sit there and say, "Yeah, you can have a dance studio, but you can only have two classes per week."
There's no way to tell someone right now that they couldn't have a dance studio in their house within 400-square-foot space.
As long as they have no clients.
Yes, there is, because the clients can't come to the house.
You can't have walk-in clients.
That's actually in the current...
No, it says, "Shall not, not generate excessive pedestrian or vehicular traffic." That's in the current.
Right.
So, the town clerk now has to determine what's excessive, without any issue associated with what the abutters might say or not say.
We had discussion at town meeting, as I recall, as to what did constitute traffic.
I guess that was the change.
If you look at, if you look, if you look at paragraph E in the existing bylaw, "The home occupation shall not generate excessive pedestrian or vehicular traffic to or from the dwelling."
Right.
And that was a change from the original bylaws saying, "No, no..."
The only, the only difference in the language that I'm proposing is the amount of square feet and the fact that you could go to a contiguous building. Everything else is identical to what's in the...
Well, no, what you're saying is that the planning board has to have extensive public hearings, and then has to write extensive decisions, because if the decision doesn't say exactly what is required, this says that tough luck, once you get your business certificate, you're on your way. There's nothing you can do if it's not in the special permit. So, the planning board would be required every time these things came up to write a wisdom of Solomon decision, knowing full well that if they didn't cover something, that they were just, the town is out of luck.
We could actually fix that. We could send it to the ZBA instead of us.
No, I, I don't think that that actually would fix it.
Well, we would be deeply unpopular.
It would fix the planning board's role.
It would fix our problem, yes. We would be deeply unpopular, I feel, with the ZBA, but, you know...
First of all, these will be trickling, if at all, so...
We think.
We think.
I mean, given the economy, more and more people may want to have their businesses out of their home.
And whether it's the Board of Appeals, or whether it's this board, whatever is coming in, is coming in with the blessing of a set of neighbors. You're not going to walk in and request a special permit and have five neighbors show up and say, "This is awful, can't live with it, don't, ought not to have it, it's dead in arrival," as a practical matter. So, if I have a small exercise facility that's 400 square feet, and I have two people coming to a class per hour, a condition could be limiting to that. Now, if, if it's, if it were, that's if it's 400 square feet in my garage, if it's 400 square feet in my dwelling, the town clerk, you know, has to make a guesstimate as to who's coming, and determine, you know, what, and just grant the certificate. So, that's done without any consent of neighbors and abutters, without any opportunity for abutters and neighbors to be heard. This gives neighbors and abutters more control over how that home occupation is managed than what is currently available. And I'm not so sure that it would, that what you, the Solomonic tomes that might have to be written would be that extensive. You know, it would be no more than so many vehicles per hour, no many, no more than so many vehicles per day, no, you don't have parking on premises, you can't have people coming, you know, it's that type of thing.
How can you possibly do that? This has, there's no parking requirement here. How can you possibly say that if you don't have enough parking? And just saying it's the general standard of what's good for the public, that the planning board somehow has to define from the ether. Standards are what are, any of these things are necessary, there should be parking requirements, there should be much better process requirements. I mean, this, the process here is a nightmare.
What about enforcement? Would you just simply rely on the neighbors complaining, or would...
The building commissioner.
The building commissioner's got a lot of work to do.
The building commissioner responds when neighbors call.
That's true, he does, yeah.
And they issue cease and desist orders, and they have the power to fine, $50 a day for every day.
I added the $50 a day, yeah.
So, all of that exists in current bylaw, simply providing for the use of detached buildings.
And contiguous lots.
On contiguous lots, by special permit. And you get into the specifics of how does traffic and parking work when you get into the specifics of the application in that case.
But it does not give us a standard to define traffic and parking.
Your standard is the general special permit standard that exists under general zoning, zoning law.
We've never, in the life of issuing special permits, relied on...
No, because you don't issue these types of special permits generally. The Board of Appeals does them all the time. It might be more appropriate that the Board of Appeals would be the appropriate entity because they hear these matters all the time. They hear the variances, use variances, all of that stuff. They're used to, they're used to determining whether or not there's a substantial detriment to the public good, or whether there's a substantial derogation of the intent of the bylaw. That's, that's the standard in law when you, that you apply.
Well, that's sort of the variance standard, but the variance standard...
No, it's a special permit standard. The variance standard, you have to go one step further. You have to establish that the lot itself is a hardship. That's the high hurdle. That's the difficult part of securing a variance. The less difficult part gets into, you know, what are the impacts of what you're proposing, and does that derogate from the, you know, substantially impaired public?
I'd rather have the Pilates studio take a space down at 36 Central and start filling up that, that building.
I think someone who's operating such a studio needs to provide parking, and I think that if we're going to license studios in residential zones, there should be a standard for parking, and it should not be observable from any neighboring dwelling. In other words, this whole thing, I mean, if we open this thing up to commercial development in residential zones, there have to be some very, very specific standards, or it's going to be a total mess.
Ned, do you have other towns that have done this at this level?
No, I just am aware of people in this town who...
No, but I have, because I know many other towns have home occupation bylaws, the question is, do they also allow them in detached buildings or in contiguous sites?
That I don't know, I have not researched neighboring towns.
All right. I asked because in researching the B&B, you know, Alex mentions expanding commercial into residential zones. In researching B&Bs, depending on the level of rooms you have, most of them are considered simply to be an accessory use to the house. And I would certainly suggest that the current home occupation is an accessory use to the house. As soon as you start expanding it to the other lots, it's no longer an accessory use. And that's why I was wondering if you had seen this expansion to contiguous lots in other areas. All right, so on this, first question is, do you feel, same as the other one, is, do you feel that this zoning proposal, if it went to the Board of Selectmen, if during a public hearing process, the concerns that you have could be fixed? Is there sufficient scope with this, in the current language as proposed, to allow us to address any of the possible concerns that we see come through a public hearing? So, that's question number one.
Okay, the answer to that's no.
Okay, fair enough. Do the rest of you agree with that?
I don't see, if we were to take this up at all, I mean, I would be willing to discuss and consider just a change to the current home occupation, allowing it to be an accessory, in an accessory building. But beyond that, expanding, you know, the kinds of uses in the area of use, I wouldn't be in favor of that.
So, in answering that question, you've pretty much answered my second question, which is, are you interested in taking this forward to the annual town meeting as an article that has been being supported by the planning board?
No.
No.
All right. So, Ned, so far, the board is not interested in taking this forward at this time.
Well, I will take that under advisement, I appreciate the, understand the will of the board, and we'll see what...
We can have a formal vote if you want, but I was...
No, I don't need a, I don't need a formal vote. I think we have to determine whether we come back through another vehicle or...
Get in a different direction.
Let it ride.
You've at least heard our general concerns on it, and you'll be able to go with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item for the zoning is the, I was going to say the accessory structure issue is the next one on the list, but I see that we have our person for the assisted living, and it may be that he wishes to go home before we get down to five and we're only on two. So, Mr. Sheffield, would you like to discuss the accessory structure?
I'd be happy to, and I appreciate being heard at this time.
You're, you're both welcome to sit through all of the rest of the articles under discussion if you wish. Yes, Ed.
Do you wish to remind the speakers of our engagement?
I was wondering if you wish, wanted to make a phone call, step out and make a phone call.
I think I want to go to bed.
We'll try and make it relatively quick, so, but these are important things that we need to discuss. So, Mr. Sheffield?
Two weeks ago, I appeared before the planning board, and the suggestion was made that I flush this out considerably to indicate application requirements, standards for determination, lot coverage, building coverage ratios, et cetera. So, this is, in essence, the same proposal, and the proposal is to provide the people of the town of Milton with additional choices as far as assisted living facilities, in order to keep this from having wide-scale and unanticipated impact. It's limited to two different types of locations. One is a location of at least 120,000 feet on, on a state highway. And this would be either in a lot or adjacent lots in common ownership, or in lots that are subject to a purchase and sales agreement as of January 1, 2012. And the reason for that is to avoid people in the future from being able to accumulate properties to reach the 120,000 threshold. The other is a requirement for 240,000 feet or approximately six acres on land that is adjacent to something that is currently zoned as Residence D. The only items zoned as Residence D in Milton are Unquity House and Winter Valley. There is a parcel that is on Highland Street that is between Milton Hospital and Winter Valley, in which assisted living would be a possibly outstanding, appropriate use. Indicated... Indicated here that if there is any application, it has to be accompanied by existing condition plans, site plans, grading plans, drainage plans, utility plans, landscape plans and evaluations. In addition, there needs to be a narrative describing what is being proposed. And the reason for this is to make sure that the information that comes to the planning board at the time of the application is sufficiently complete that it has the information necessary for the board to make a decision. You then put development requirements and the ability to have an accessory structure such as a garage or some other outbuilding on the location. Heightened setback and in this, we suggested that we limit it to three floors and forty feet high. That we have building coverage and floor area and they would be, the building cannot consume more than twenty-five percent of the property. And combined, it cannot be more than fifty percent of the property as far as floor area ratio. That means that a three-story building would be allowed only to occupy a lesser amount than twenty-five percent of the, of the property. We have open space requirements, parking requirements. Also, we have other provisions. And one of the most important other provisions is if there is an existing nonprofit senior housing facility that wants to add to the number of units which are considered assisted living and licensed as such by the state, that they, they can do so without incurring the special requirements of this bylaw. This is intended really to permit a for-profit assisted living facility to be created within the town. And I think if there is any, any hearing, the details might be tweaked a little. But essentially, I believe that this is written to meet a need to provide a standard for determination in the, in the... And this would be a worthwhile bylaw change and could be submitted by the planning board.
Any comments, questions? Yes, Fred.
Would Fuller Village...
Fuller Village right now has some units that they provide some additional services, but they're not licensed as assisted living. If they wanted to license a building or a number of units as assisted living, they would be free under this bylaw thing to go ahead and do so without complian, compliance with the bylaw provision.
Because it's such a large elderly population that they're going to be stepping up with some of those...
Yes, they are, there's no question about it. And it, it is outstanding to have aging in place considerations such as available with Fuller Housing. When you go in, you may live in one of the villas when you're in your early sixties. And by the time you get to eighty-two and have had three strokes, that you need more, more services.
No intention of having three strokes by the time I'm eighty-two. Thank you very much.
A hundred and two maybe.
A hundred and two maybe. Any other questions? Alex.
Well, I have a comment. I have a very serious problem with only a hundred and twenty thousand square feet for a huge building that's less than three acres. And I gather that it's, the idea is to put an assisted living facility where the horse stable off Randolph Avenue is. And I would want to see, before I zone for such a facility, I would want to see what it was going to look like. Because that is what we've done with all our other major, major developments in town. We've found out exactly what is being proposed and then we've determined whether or not we think it's a good plan. Here, if you create the special permit process, the planning board doesn't have the ability to turn down the development. It can tweak it at the edges. But if a hundred and twenty thousand square feet isn't big enough, there is no opportunity for the planning board to...
Well, this only allows a FAR of point five, which is a third of the, you know, what's going in at, down at the Hendrys, less than a third of what they're proposing. So if they had a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, that means it could be a sixty thousand square foot building.
I think it's fine at the Hendry side. I don't think it's fine in a residential neighborhood. The other problem I have is that the other site next to a D site, there is a possible, possibility that a developer will want to do assisted living here. But what if the developer wants to do, a developer wants to do assisted living somewhere else? This simply is designer zoning for an unknown developer of the horse stable and an unknown developer of some property across the street from Milton Hospital. And I don't think that we should be in the... And once again, it is a major commercial use in a residential zone. And I think that rushing into it with zoning that we've seen for the first time tonight is a huge mistake and I can't support it.
Yeah, Ed first and then you can...
I agree with Alex and I also want to say, once again, I think this is something that would be addressed by the master plan. Thank you.
Bill, we had hoped that you'd have an opportunity to see if you could come up with some sample bylaws that others have. Do you know of any?
I do, I don't have copies for you, but I have what they, what they have.
Do you have any sense of what they say or how they regulate them?
Amherst regulates them as institutional use, allowed, permitted variously in both residential and business districts, but not in the more intense commercial and industrial zones. Conquet has taken several, various, has taken various approaches over the years to address these important and evolving uses. The town adopted a medical professional district, which was already located, in which was already located, a regional hospital, a nursing and rehabilitation center, and the New England Deaconess abundant life facility, which is continuing care, assisted living in a nursing home, all in one site. The uses of hospital and nursing home are defined in institutional uses and allowed in the business district and the medical professional district. Conquet also uses limited business district zoning, which provides for specific uses in the limited business district. There are eight districts in town. Nursing home and medical office uses I used are, were added as allowed uses to this district in nineteen ninety-two. In nineteen ninety-nine, they also adopted assisted living, living residence use, which is allowed in specific limited business district, specifically number eight. They've got a seventy-eight unit assisted living which opened in two thousand and one.
I, I mean, as a general thing, I think the idea of allowing the development of an assisted living facility in town is a good thing. I think it's a needed facility and something that we should try to accommodate it. Now, whether broader bay zoning like this that may apply to, I don't know how many sites because we haven't looked at it, I guess in that detail, is the way to do it or whether we should try to identify an area and rezone like, you know, Amherst does and have a medical facility or a, you know, I really don't know. But I do think it's a, it's a worthwhile use in a public facility that would be good to, you know, to ride in town.
If I may, if I may speak a moment, there are three hundred and fifty-one municipalities within the Commonwealth. I looked at maybe thirty-five and found that there were no specific zoning for assisted living and that these are considered residential. People live there. It is for-profit and most of them have come into town by way of a Board of Appeals variance on the showing that there is a need and that it's not specifically prohibited or allowed in the existing zoning bylaw. This is the avenue that could be taken in Milton. However, I think it would be preferable to have something in the bylaw that would give the, the planning board some discretion and ability to review before the, before it comes into use. I think that we have a standard and the standard for review would be that the desired relief, and that is the granting of the special permit for an assisted living, may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. And the board would be allowed to make appropriate conditions and limitations necessary to safeguard the legitimate use of the property in the neighborhood as well as the health and safety of the public and the other standards for the granting of a permit, which is already in our bylaw. So the, the standard is there and it gives a great deal of discretion to the, to the planning boards. Again, I was considering a broader application that it should be available, you know, in a business district. It should be available more generally. However, in speaking twice before this board, I was cautioned that at least at this time immediately, that we should really restrict the number of possible locations until we can try this out so that it doesn't have unanticipated ramifications. And that's why it's limited to two specific areas that both seem appropriate for some assisted living.
Have you asked the neighbors whether they consider this appropriate?
No, we haven't asked the neighbors and there's been no application.
I would suggest then, saying that it is appropriate is perhaps a little premature.
I, I think a specific, I think a specific proposal would have to be kind of on the table for the, for the residents to be able to make this type of determination.
And for the planning board, I might add.
And for the planning board, that's why there's no application here.
And that's why you're asking us to zone for something. We have no idea what we're zoning for.
I mean, I think there's basically three, three ways to try to get this done. One would be to go to the ZBA and have a bill, have a location and suggest that, you know, this is a need. That's one possible strategy. Another would be to try to affect a zoning bylaw broadly applicable. And a third would be to come up with a particular proposal for a particular site and try to get a zoning overlay passed, which is kind of the way we've gone about things in the past. There's, there's three strategies. You know, I don't know if the ZBA would want, I guess... I would worry a little bit not having any notion of what the neighbors around these sites would think and not having a pretty good analysis of where the potential sites are for this to be because it could turn out to be in my neighborhood. You know, but, but not that, I mean, I have nothing against the idea of an assisted living facility. And again, I think it's a good facility, but maybe one of the, a more traditional way to work with this board is to make a proposal for a particular site and then go to town meeting and try to get rezoning.
The, the problem with, with that on this type of business is it essentially would take a year and a half to accomplish. And business plans are so fluid that very few business entities would want to undertake something that would be that time-consuming and make an investment that would be that problematical. That's why it's probably never happened in Milton and we need a greater choice in assisted living.
Ed first.
Bob, this is a, three pieces of paper trying to convince us to vote for, recommend us to be sent to selectmen.
Yeah.
I like to see stuff on a plan form. We have what we call the assessors' plans. We have assessors' plans for the various sections of the town, all of which you could show us where these two sites may be and what is around them, three sixty and so forth. That, that would be a way to say, hey, look, the impact is, can't be much bigger than the other institutions or the situations around three sixty. I know, we're talking about the Crossman Hospital and the, and the stable. And I think the stable may be, may be a worthy site with three acres of land. However, show me what's around it. This doesn't show me what's around it and that's my point. I'd like to see some...
You have the site there, Bill?
I'd like to see some realistic plans showing what you're proposing in relation to what's there. I don't have it. I have no, no excitement about this if I can't see it in plan form.
You know, traditionally, for the, the past few zoning changes we've done, for the past few zoning changes that we've done, traditionally, we have had a plan in front of us and we have made our arguments to town meeting based on that plan. And you know, that cuts both ways. Because one of the problems we've had is that people who have taken their renderings to town meeting have come back and said, well, town meeting approved the plans, therefore you must approve the special permit.
Oh, no.
No, 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 not, not you, but that has happened in the past. And I think it can sometimes be difficult taking a specific plan to town meeting because there is occasionally the expectation that that is the final plan and that's what's going to get passed. So I don't have a difficulty with not having a plan or a specific project in front of us. There's a couple of things missing from the zoning that I would have liked to have seen. We have development requirements. We don't have any sort of design standards. So there's nothing there on facades, for example. There's nothing really there on massing. You know, we have the FAR, but we don't have massing. We do have heightened setback. There might be a couple of other things I'd like to add and start...
Like the number of units.
Well, there's no restriction on the number of units, although, you know, partially the number of square footage would...
But for the ten acre site, it could be a thousand units.
Yeah, and, and the other interesting thing is there is that under two A, we've got one building shall be for the purpose of providing housing for the elderly and infirm. But it's an interesting question as to whether or not a more successful development might be several smaller buildings set up to look like some sort of village cluster. And that would not be allowed here on one of the larger sites. That's, that would not be allowed by this. And I don't know if the answer is that would look better or if it were. I'm just noting that that possibility is not allowed. So I think one of my, my first question is going to be to the board, the same thing, is, So I think one of my first questions is going to be to the Board, the same thing, is can our objections to this zoning be solved in the public hearing process? Does this give us enough scope to address the objections we have? Or, you know, and if so, then are we interested in taking it forward? Or do we feel that it's not yet ready? I should mention that I do know that on the warrant is an article that would, if passed by town meeting, establish a fall town meeting as well as an annual town meeting, a regular date for a fall town meeting. As it is now, we have our annual town meeting in May and then we figure out when we're going to have a fall town meeting and it's hard to plan for that. This article, if passed, would set up a standard date for a fall town meeting. You could always have a second town meeting, one in the winter as we're having now. So it may be that if we feel that zoning isn't ready, that the fall town meeting would be a possibility. However, I do appreciate the fact that this would be very useful for the town meeting in either or both sites potentially and that, as you say, business plans are fluid, especially these days with the type of economy we're in. So if the other members of the Board don't have an issue with being able to fix it in the permit process, in the public hearing process, I'd be interested in seeing whether or not we wanted to take it forward. If they feel that it's so substantially flawed that that can't be done, then that's another issue. It does, it's not completely spot zoning. It does allow for two sites. As you say, it could always be altered later on. I don't think I'd support it in our three major business districts because I think that land is suited for something else, although Eddie did point out that we had a fourth.
I believe it could be modified at the public hearing. And the other thing is if the Planning Board is not comfortable with it, after the public hearing, the Planning Board can vote to recommend no.
We could vote to recommend no if it hasn't been gone, if it hasn't been placed into the warrant. I believe we could even withdraw it at that point.
Yes.
So I'd have to check on that. Once it's in the warrant, we cannot withdraw it, but it is possible to withdraw it before the warrant goes.
Once it's printed in the warrant.
Yeah, you cannot, yeah.
But, I mean, that's a long time from now.
Early March, mid-March.
Yes, yes, but I mean, we're here in 2011. That's three months from now. And we could pull it and we could modify it to include those issues.
We could modify it assuming there's enough scope within what's currently written.
Yes.
So, and that's, that has to be the judgment of the Board now.
Well, you're saying we can rewrite it.
No, I'm not saying we can rewrite it. I'm saying can we modify portions of it?
I mean, if we're going to impose a unit limitation, that can't be done. Or I guess maybe, no.
Is that within the scope? It's not within development requirements?
I don't think it's within the scope because it might.
Because we have development requirements in there already.
I don't believe, it seems to me that the Planning Board is going to be asked for a recommendation on the article that's submitted. And that to say that the Planning Board will then rewrite the article that's submitted to come up with something else.
I am not suggesting we rewrite the article. I'm suggesting, is it possible under two to add H, I, and J? Under three, to add E, F? Under one, to add H, I, or J? The question is, would we?
Like access? We know that access is a problem.
Yes.
And, you know, it's not a very safe roadway that we're talking about going up to that stable. It's on a hill and it comes directly down into Randolph Avenue. And it seems to me that there has to be, that's one of the standards that has to be in this, standards for traffic.
Certainly, we need a traffic study.
Right, so can that be added under two?
I'm sure there would have to be a traffic plan because, and they would have to work with the state highway to get a light or, you know, to determine what's needed in terms of roadway.
All right, but let me caution you. What are we talking about that's actually under the special permit process? And what are we talking about that needs to be in the zoning?
Right. Well, I think listed under number one, application requirements should be a traffic study and traffic plans.
Okay.
Because we don't have anything about traffic in there, for sure.
Well, I think that there has to be a requirement that it not adversely impact neighboring properties. I don't think the special permit standard in Section 8 is adequate to protect neighbors against diminution of property values.
All right, so both of those could be added under one.
I've seen this for exactly an hour. I can assure you that there are 100 things that should be added to this.
That's fine, but what I'm saying is can we add it during, do we have the scope within, are there enough definitions of sections that we can add it in the public hearing process or not?
How can we add it in the, but the article is the article. Once it's submitted, it's the article.
In our record.
We can recommend a different one, but the town meeting is going to vote on the article.
No, we're not recommending a different one in our recommendation. We can add provisions that we feel should be added. That's why we have.
We can only recommend revisions.
Yes, and then we.
And so the original article goes up. We then recommend revisions and have a discussion by town meeting as to whether or not the article should be amended to include the revisions. And that's not the way it should be.
The recommend.
Article in the warrant should be the article that the town meeting is voting on.
Yes, but you are forgetting, you're forgetting that the warrant committee puts the recommendations into the warrant as well. And if they accept our recommendations, those would also be in the warrant. And they may or may not accept our recommendations, but if we hold our public hearing in time for them to get the recommendation in, they might.
And then we write up revised zoning. Someone writes up revised zoning.
I am just talking about adding paragraphs. I am not talking about rewriting the whole thing.
When we, if we send it to the Board of Selectmen, you know, and ask them, isn't that initially just putting a placeholder on the warrant?
Well, now, that is an interesting thing. I'm so glad you brought that up.
And then we can have our hearings and change the language so that before the warrant is written, is printed, we have the language that the Selectmen and the warrant committee review for placement in the warrant.
In the past, within my living memory, the warrant committee used to receive articles saying, Article YY, Planning Board Article on Such and Such, with absolutely no language what was so out there. That was submitted to the Selectmen. We have, in recent years, been very good about not doing that and giving them.
There was a chair of the warrant committee who, I recall, had a fit about that.
Yes, she did. I want to do that.
Yes, she did.
Many fits, come to think of it. So in the last few years, we have been very good at giving the Selectmen substantially the language that's going in. However, that does not prohibit us from treating it as a placeholder.
Changing the, going through the public hearing process, changing the language.
Right.
And then having that printed.
However, yes. However, as a matter of process, it would be best if what we gave to the Selectmen was substantially what was going to go into the warrant.
How can we advertise the article if we're going to change it?
That's why I'm, well, how did you use to advertise the article if you're going to change it? Because you didn't have an article when you gave it to the Selectmen. You did by the time you had the public hearings.
You advertise it, but it's open for modification.
Always been that the article has to be on view and it has to be in substantially the form, and this is, what we're talking about are very significant changes.
In January, we could resubmit a modified wording to the Selectmen, which would then go to the warrant committee. And then the public hearing would be on what is being considered by the warrant committee for the town meeting. Right now, it's a placeholder. Right now, it's a.
It has to be a substantial placeholder.
But this would be a substantial placeholder. The question is, you know, if it's approved to go on the warrant in January, early January, then we have public hearings and based on the public hearings, we make some modifications. We did that with the Temple. We made modifications to that so that the language printed in the warrant wasn't the one that went for the placeholder in January. And I imagine that's how this would work.
We could potentially do that. If we do that for this article, I would have to ask, are you also willing to do that for the home occupation article or are you not willing to take that one? Because we didn't talk about this option, the home occupation article. And so to be fair to both parties, I have to ask the question about that as well. Do you want to do that for both articles?
Well, I think we got the sense of the Board on the home occupation one that we didn't have any, you know, interest or support for anything approaching that article.
As it was currently written, but at least some people mentioned, for example, you modifying other elements. So the question is, to be fair.
Well, the next step would be for the proponent to come back and just maybe propose that we just modify the home occupation, you know, just amend the home occupation language to change or accessory structure. You know, that's quite a bit different than adopting a whole new zoning article.
Fair enough, but do you want to put that in as a placeholder or not? Because now that you're calling this a placeholder.
I think that depends on the proponent if they come forward with something they want us to consider.
All right, so we'll take that up after we finish with this one, perhaps.
I mean, I, you know, the notion of 60,000 square feet on a three-acre lot, you know, I think that can be done very well and I don't think that's overwhelming. Now, if we put on a 10-acre lot and all of a sudden are having, you know, 200,000 square feet of space, you know, that's a whole different ball of wax. And this, in theory, could apply to a lot of a mega tour.
It will be a, there is a 40B development and it will be used as the town has, this is the town standard for building size.
You mean the 40B will?
Yes. Now, in the 40B process, it would be used as the town standard for the amount of building you can put on a small site. And so if they've got nine acres, multiply by three. I think that the site is too small. I think it's badly configured for assisted living. I think just because a developer has expressed some interest, some vague interest in doing an assisted living facility there rather than across the street from the hospital where it would make some sense. I don't, I would take a lot of showing for me to think that that site would be appropriate for an assisted living facility. It's much too small and it would be a very pernicious precedent and the town would live to regret it, in my view.
Well, I think that maybe we should word this to be able to have the Planning Board impose a ceiling on the number of units. Secondly, there has been no specific proposal for the horse farm. One thing that's being considered is that there is a traffic light if, and the town owns the roadway that goes up behind the, behind the site. If that were the traffic way, it would be, you know, quite effective insofar as you'd have a traffic light entrance and exit. You'd be able to come in that way. And many of the things that Alex is concerned about would be nonexistent. And I'm not saying that's what the proposal will end up being, but that's a possibility and that's what would be considered by the Planning Board at the time an application is submitted.
I've just read your zoning. You eliminate that this lot, the horse stable, has 33 feet of frontage on Route 28. And this zoning says, "The frontage of the lot shall be no less than the frontage requirement defined in Section 6."
That's correct.
Which is for, I assume, for a building lot.
Yes.
Well, that's 75 feet.
That is correct.
Lots in common ownership.
Which are the lots in common ownership there?
I don't know, I'm just saying the zoning says lots in common.
Lots in common ownership are under purchase and sales agreement in effect prior to January 1st.
My plan is to buy one of those houses.
By January?
By January 1st.
All right.
All right.
I don't think it's an appropriate site and I would, I need to be shown that it's an appropriate site before I will do anything to support zoning, to zone it for assisted living.
All right, that's fair enough. But the question is, do you want it to be as a placeholder for the Board of Selectmen or not?
No, I don't. I'm not going to vote to send this to the Selectmen. I think that would be a huge mistake.
Anybody else?
Well, that would allow us to at least begin a public process to see.
Begin the public process if this is supposed to be the end of the public process, except for the Planning Board hearing on the zoning is submitted. I mean, if we have a hearing and then we change the zoning all around to be something else, then the public have had no opportunity to comment on what.
But that's the notion of the public hearing, so they have an opportunity to review it.
So they have an opportunity to review it, but you're not supposed to be making tons of changes after the public hearing. It's supposed to be minor modifications.
What's the purpose of a public hearing then if the public, if it's all decided before?
To determine whether or not we think that the town meeting should pass the legislation, not to rewrite the thing.
Well, I mean, our public hearings on the Temple were, you know, in a lot of detail to determine whether or not the zone, what the form the zoning should take and all that kind of stuff.
Right, but that's because we were proposing the zoning. We were getting to the point that we were taking it to town meeting, which is exactly the point we're at now. Technically, if the Planning Board is supporting an article, that article should be in final form as close to possible when we give it to the Selectmen.
I've never seen that happen.
The public, well, because we don't do it correctly. The public hearing is required prior to town meeting.
Most of our zoning articles are actually in rather good form when we send them up to the Selectmen.
They are now. They weren't always beforehand.
Well, they always have been in pretty good form.
But we have public hearings to get input to the public before we.
But, no, 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 no. We're talking about the different public hearings. The public hearing that we were talking about on the zoning is once the zoning is on the warrant, we are required to hold a public hearing on that zoning prior to town meeting in order to give our recommendation to the warrant committee and to the town meeting itself. At that public hearing, yes, we can make minor changes to the recommendations, but that's not the point of that particular public hearing. It's the zoning, I mean, the zoning is supposed to be mostly done by the time of that public hearing. The public hearings we were holding on the Temple project were to get us to the point at which we could actually write the zoning. Then we technically had to have one public hearing after the zoning was written, once it was on the warrant, to give our recommendation to town meeting. And that's, in fact, what we did. If you remember, we had one vote to send it to the Board of Selectmen and then another vote whether or not to actually recommend it.
Right, so we had many, many times of public hearings to develop the zoning.
Exactly.
And that's what.
Those were, as a result of the study, there was a, that was requested.
Yes.
By the town meeting. And so there was a whole process, public process, not a public hearing, public process that arrived at.
It's a public process. I can't, I can't vote to rezone any property until we get input from the public on it. I'm not going to propose rezoning any piece of land until we hear from the public.
Well, and this is part of the problem we're having tonight is that we're getting this particular draft for the first time at the meeting. So with this being the last meeting prior to us going to send this to.
You're receiving this particular draft, but you've received, you know, three other drafts that we've discussed.
Yes, that's true. And that's a fair point.
And this is not something that's being brought up at the 11th hour.
No, I agree. That's a fair point.
The other thing is if there is anything that is lacking, that can be added so that the Board is more satisfied with the entire proposal. But I believe that this is in more than enough detail to submit to the Selectmen to have an article to permit a for-profit assisted living in the, in the town of Milton and to make it a legal use.
On two particular sites, neither of whom has a specific developer lined up. On two particular sites, neither of whom has a specific developer lined up.
Well, that's the notion, that's one of the difficulties I have. If we do put this on the warrant and then want to have public hearings, our public input, some kind of public process, who is going to generate the design studies for us to understand what it's going to look like on there if there's not a proponent?
Question, do we actually need, and this is devil's advocate, I'm not saying one way or the other. Do we actually need design studies for particular projects in order to do zoning?
We don't need them, but I think the, for example, the neighbors who, you know, are around this site and they're going to have this huge development, you know, in their neighborhood are going to be asking, well, what's, what's the impact going to be on us? What's it going to be looked like? How much traffic is, is it going to generate and things like that? And if there's not a proponent to do the traffic studies, to do massing, to do any visual studies, then there's no way for the neighbors to know other than to say, you know, no, it's going to affect me. So I, you know, I guess that gets back to how we've done zoning before on a case-by-case basis.
Well, if this information, if this information is not made available to the neighbors by the time there's a public hearing and by the time there's a town meeting, I can guarantee what the results will be and I can guarantee that the public will be protected.
You can't guarantee those things. All you can say is your best judgment is that that would happen.
My best judgment is if the neighbors of these two areas are very concerned about this zoning, it is not likely to pass the town meeting.
Why don't we find out if they are?
And it's not likely to get the Board of, the Planning Board or the Board of Selectmen or the Warrant Committee either.
Well, it's not. If the neighbors, if we have no idea what the neighbors feel about this, why would the planning board say, well, who cares what the neighbors think? We'll just send this off to the selectmen.
All right, so it's quarter to 10 and we've got a bunch more of these articles in front of us. So my question for you is, do we need to bring this to a vote? Or are you consensus for giving to selectmen or consensus for not giving to selectmen? How do you want to do this?
Not.
That's a not.
Not.
You're a not, that's two.
Yeah, I think we've got to study it further and know what the ramifications are before we.
Can you give it to the selectmen while you're studying it?
Well, that's what I thought, but it appears not. Because we're being told that if we give it to the selectmen, it's got to be substantially in the form that it's going to go, in which case, you know, we don't know.
Well, and that's my question, how much is it going to be altered?
To identify a site, you know.
No, 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 it said nothing about development studies, just the zoning that has to be substantial.
No, I know, but to zone a site for this, of course, we can give it to the selectmen and then not recommend it to the town meeting.
And then withdraw it.
We could do that as well.
That's definitely within your power.
I have mixed emotions, but I tend to agree with Alex and Ed. But Peter has said something that maybe, you know, the week of us passing this over. You can, you can break the tie.
Except we're not meeting, well, there's no tie.
We're not meeting, well, here's the thing.
Meeting until January 10th or 12th.
We are not currently meeting until after the selectmen have closed the warrant. However, or after the deadline for getting it in for them to close the warrant. So we can do it one of two ways. We could either have another meeting before then. We can meet January 5th, which is the day before, it's the Thursday before. Or we could, could send it to the selectmen with a note that we'd like to discuss it at our next meeting, so we're getting it in, but there's a good possibility that we'll withdraw it. Those are your two options.
No, there's a third one. We could say that there is no particular developer pressing like mad to do this. There's no reason we can't do it in the fall and let the proponents, you know, show exactly what they're talking about.
That's also a possibility.
But I do agree with Bob that, you know, if that's the route we go, then it's, you know, really three years and a lot of upfront planning and a zone cost.
When I came in originally, I asked to go on the special town meeting and.
We told you no, didn't we?
We asked for you to make changes in the zoning and you've made the changes on the final meeting. And it wasn't that we didn't specify what the changes we wanted were, because I remember discussing them with you. And you came back the next time with the same zoning as you'd had the time before, as though we hadn't even talked. And it does seem to me that there is no rush here. And if the proponents are serious and they, you know, think that this is important, then maybe we'll get some activity on, and some answers on some of these things.
But if we could submit it to the selectmen with the note that it may be withdrawn, then at least it gives it the possibility of going through on a timely basis.
Warrant goes to press mid-March usually. It's a little bit earlier this year because May town meeting's a little bit earlier this year. But mid-March is usually when it does. So we would have to hold our public hearings in February. The Warrant Committee's all-day meeting is, I think, for the budget is February 12?
I thought it was January, end of January.
Well, it's a good, but we've got a special town meeting. I think they moved it, maybe earlier in February. I haven't checked my calendar in a while. Yeah. So we would have to have our public hearings probably end of January, beginning of February, right after the town meeting in February would make the best sense in order, because a public hearing might go more than one night. So we can't assume that we'll, after all, if we're having such a.
Well, this will give the public plenty of notices to what's going on.
Yes.
I, I don't like the process. I think that it's, it's not a good process. I think that we should probably have a meeting to discuss assisted living and people's ideas on it.
I'm not keen on the process either. I would have preferred that we be further along in our discussion on this before sending it to the selectmen. Not to say I'm not willing to do it, but I'm not happy about it. No?
I'd say no.
Bernie?
Well, yeah.
Don't listen to the lawyers, Bernie.
I think that assisted living really is needed.
I, I agree.
And just additional effort on our part, another couple of weeks clarifying when you get in touch with the selectmen that we might withdraw it.
So you'd be, you would be willing to send it forward to the selectmen with a note? Ed, I saw your hand up next.
I just want to say that the public input at this time of year would be difficult to get them and just spread the complicated processes of the holiday season. I would say no.
No?
As much as I want to see the development of assisted living facilities, I think, I think as difficult as it is, the process that this town has used for approving major developments, which has really been to develop zoning around a proposal so that we've got the technical information in front of us, you know, I think it's served us well. It doesn't serve, it's not the easiest thing for developers. It takes time and money, but I think it's served the town well. And so I think I wouldn't be in favor of rushing it through at this point.
But I think you'll have that information before.
Well, it's, it's difficult when I'm being told that this, if we send this to selectmen, this is really what we're, we're not developing new zoning. This is the zoning that we're, you know, putting forward. And I don't think I'm ready to do that.
You can even change that before the, you know.
Yeah, although again, what I'm being told is that, and I, you know, I think we've done other things.
I'm telling you the ideal here, Pete, I'm telling you the ideal.
Are we saying that through a public process, we can revise zoning to be on the warrant? Are we saying that this is the zoning? Because that's what I've been told here tonight, is that it substantially has to be this zoning. We can change a word here, change a word there. And if that's the case, I can't support this. If it is, all it is is a placeholder that we can then begin to have public discussions about it. I don't have a problem, except there's nothing that guarantees us that if we go to that public process that there's going to be the technical information, the plans and studies and things like that. There's no commitment from anybody that they're going to come in and hire architects and landscape architects and traffic engineers and civil engineers to develop, use that public process to develop a thing. So I guess I just can't support it.
In my opinion, having been on the other side of this, for the Warrant Committee who will be in January deeply into their budget sessions and have a special town meeting at the end of January this year, have a significantly reduced timeline on the warrant, to give them a placeholder and say, we're going to make all these changes sometime in February. You'll get it whenever we're done. I think that is the wrong way to do the process. It's intensely frustrating for the Warrant Committee. It generally means that they are not able to give their full attention to the zoning. And what that usually means is when questions come up at town meeting, the zoning proposal has not been heard fully and questions are unable to be answered. And I, you know, if it were a case that maybe we might add a paragraph, you know, a couple of lines here, I might be willing. I'm not hearing that any of you are substantially satisfied with this zoning. And so I would not put it forward to the Board of Selectmen because of that.
That's our vote there.
And, you know, going forward, I would prefer that things are in much better shape for going to the selectmen at this point in the year, so.
So is that a?
That's it.
4-1. Thank you very much.
I guess what, what we're being led to say is if you do have someone who's interested in developing that site, maybe the next step is for them to bring forward a proposal for us to start reviewing with notions of a fall town meeting to try to see it, as opposed to just generalize zoning, to really have a proposal on the table for us to review.
You can come back to us in January and we'll start talking about the fall, because that was actually one of the intents.
Developer who's got some plans for the site or whatever.
January is next month.
Yeah. One of the intents of having a specified date for the fall town meeting is that it would be the prime meeting for zoning articles in that it would allow the planning board to say, we know that we are aiming for this date for anybody who's coming in. Not that you couldn't have another special town meeting for zoning articles, not that you couldn't bring them up at the annual, because you can. But it gives us enough planning time to start now and aim for that fall date, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, accessory structure issue, what do you got? I know we don't have any language, because it's not sitting in front of me.
Fall.
Fall, fine.
Well, I like that.
Bed and breakfast article.
I'd like to take it, I'd like to take and say the, the other issue that the building commissioner brought up was the parking issue. What he was referring to is commercial vehicles and parking on roads that are not controlled by our police department, i.e.
Blue Hill Parkway.
Blue Hill Parkway.
Randolph Ave.
No, they do Randolph Ave, Lower Brushhill Road. There's cabs parked on Lower Brushhill Road every day, all day. There's cars and cabs and trucks parked on Blue Hill Parkway and there's nothing he can do about those.
You can contact ECR.
He could contact ECR, he could call the state police. But our police say it's a state police issue. And the state police don't feel that it's a priority issue for them. This would have given him an opportunity, or could give him an opportunity to particularly be able to address, and it was cabs that he was getting all the calls about.
So he was suggesting zoning language that gave him the authority to do something on those roads?
I still think that's general bylaw rather than zoning.
Plus, I don't think, I don't think we have the authority.
Even though it's a state.
It's the state.
Unless we've got, we've got dual jurisdiction. But the question is, does it extend to parking?
However.
You have the former chief counsel of the Mass Highway Department here.
However, not, this one's not on the agenda, so stop. Yeah. Okay, bed and breakfast article, fall.
I like that.
And that actually is two articles, just so you know. It would be the bed and breakfast and it would be the Mass General Laws, Chapter 64G, to allow for room occupancy tax.
Fall.
Yes, fall. However, adoption of updated zoning map and master plan article. Master plan article is in substantially final form. In fact, it is in final form completely and the zoning map.
Thanks, Ned.
Thank you, Ned.
What I have here and behind you, the white one is the, is our current zoning map. It was last approved by a town meeting in 1995. What we're looking to do is update the plan. The one that is in color here is the one that was, it's being done by, it's this one. It's being done by our engineering department, our GIS department. This one's just too small so you couldn't get the names on it. It would be like this. What I did is I printed out this one with streets and you see all the streets are overlaid and you can't read whose who. What we're doing is making this thing available digitally and it will be on the web. So you can go to a particular street, hit it, and it's going to tell you what the zone is in that area. You can print it out, it'll get printed out like this, only all the streets will be on there correctly so that they'll bend, so they'll be like this one here. What we have is we have a lot of private roads that are on here. We have driveways that are on here. They shouldn't be there. Some of the driveways are just that they're driveways, but because they're long, they got picked up and they got put onto the map, onto the plan. We're looking to update it. Helen Bishop's been working on this for a while.
Fall.
Fall.
No, actually, we need this.
But we don't have anything we can send because we don't have a proper map to, to check.
We actually need this done.
We, we need to make sure it's done right.
Of course we need to make sure it's done right.
What don't we have as a proper map?
We don't have, we don't have the zoning map yet.
Isn't that it?
This is the same zoning that's on that map right there.
It's exactly the same thing, it's just in digital form.
And we have to, we have to, who is, we have a current zoning map, right?
Outdated.
Right here.
Yes.
1995.
That's the current zoning map and, and who, who has verified that they're the same?
The engineering department.
All right, well, who in the engineering department has, well, okay, this is fine. It seems to me that just saying, "The engineering department has done it", when it was a clerk at the engineering department who isn't necessarily going to get everything right. In other words, this is the zoning map and to say, "Well, the engineering department did it, it must be right."
I agree it's the zoning map, but we're not approving the zoning map tonight. We're approving sending it to town meeting. We will have ample time to check it and hold a public hearing on it prior to town meeting.
And why is it so important that we have it?
For planning purposes?
We have a zoning.
Done in 1995, it's missing all the overlays.
It's a correct zoning map.
No, it's not, it's missing the overlays.
Also missing several streets.
Merry Christmas.
Come on in.
I don't think he wants to join a planning board meeting. Sorry, what was that?
Well, I, I would like to have the final thing around before sending it off somewhere.
I'd like to look at it for, I looked at it briefly tonight and by way of example, East Milton.
Yes.
The business district is shown in one color, just slightly different hue, a different color, different hue is the residential portion, very poorly done.
The color is important.
Very, very poorly done.
It is, because you have to be able to read it.
I think the planning field has standard colors for the different uses.
They usually do.
They usually do.
And I don't think this is consistent with that. I agree with Ed's saying, having two oranges that represent both residential.
And I like to think I know a little bit about it.
Yes, you do.
From the past, but I haven't had a chance to look at it, other than that very, very briefly.
Now, I will point out that in our current mode of seeing things before we vote on them, getting it today, I know they've been working right up to the clock, but it is kind of tricky that we're getting it today.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
We should have gotten it at a previous meeting so that we could discuss it today.
I, I can't, cannot help but think that there's plenty of time between now and town meeting to have the correct map and to verify it and things like that. So the notion of taking, the notion of taking the revised zoning plan to the annual town meeting, I have no problem with that, I'd be supportive of that. But I would want to, you know, know that between now and then, there was the verification, you know, for the exact limits of the different zones. There would be, you know, a review of the colors as opposed to standard practice for designating different zones and things like that. But I, but I don't, you know, I think the notion of updating our zoning plan is well overdue and we ought to, there's no reason it can't be done for the spring.
Alex, I'll take that home and go over to the.
No, this is, this is.
Take the bigger one.
1995, yeah.
But it doesn't have all the streets because...
It isn't, you have a completed thing. I'm not going to review something that hasn't been completed by the zoning department.
Do we have the language for the article? I mean, you don't just hand town meeting the map, do you have the language? Although it's an idea.
I do not. Let's do it in the later following, yeah. Pace makes waste.
Pace makes waste. That brings us down. Hang on, let me just check my agenda to the final...
Master, master plan.
Article, which is the master plan. Okay, so, did you print out for everybody?
But you haven't.
Last thing, I haven't. Okay, so I added two...
We looked at it.
I, I added two phrases to the last one, because I was missing them. So I'll read it to you, because it's one paragraph long. "To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate to update the town's master plan under MGL Chapter 41, Section 81D for the 12-month period beginning July 1st, 2012." That's new phrase number one. "To determine how said appropriation shall be raised," new phrase number two, "whether by transfer from available funds or otherwise to allow the Board of Selectmen to accept grants, gifts for, or grants, grants or gifts for the purposes of this article, and to act on anything related thereto submitted by the planning board."
And last time I said this is a win-win.
Yes, you did.
And I'm for it.
Fabulous. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Do I have a motion?
Yes. That we send it to the Selectmen.
Your motion.
As a placeholder?
This is the placeholder, this is the full thing.
Send it to them.
I would like to point out actual full language. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Move re-adjourn.